Okay, thank you Jim. I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board to order. First of all, I believe that the posted meeting agenda stands as posted although there's be a number of continuations of public hearings and whatnot. I think you've all had a chance to read the January four minutes, I hope.
Are you skipping over meeting notes?
No, I'm gonna get back to that.
Oh, I see, okay.
I just read this one first, so I thought I might as well keep going. Okay, a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Melody.
Second, Kathy.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. And I know you've all had a chance to read Jim's meeting notes. Could I hear a motion to approve the meeting notes?
Somewhere we can add now.
Second, Melody.
Thank you, Melody. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good, thank you. And we do have a couple of announcements tonight. First of all, as you know, Sharon's no longer with us and I hope I speak for all of you, I certainly do for myself. Sharon just did a phenomenal job for us. She was always there when I needed help. I've enjoyed working with her. I'm hoping she's gonna be doing some very interesting things now with our historic archaeological preservation advisory committee, particularly on projects that have a significant relationship to Rhinebeck's agricultural heritage. But I'm sure I speak for all of you, thanking Sharon for all the time she's given to Rhinebeck at the CAC, the Park Committee, the Planning Board. She's just been a tremendous asset to our community. And I just, for all of us, I want to thank her very much for the time she gave us, because I know this is a lot of work. And I also want to, to welcome our two new members, Sean and Joe, who have very bravely agreed to join us and this is their first meeting, so we're gonna try to be very gentle and not scare them off so they'll come back to the next one, which I understand from Gretchen can have a much more adventurous agenda. But Sean and Joe, welcome. If you have any questions, please feel free to speak to me. Gretchen, Melody can help. Jim is always available as well. And the Town of Rhinebeck does have a very involved planning process because of the documents we have. The responsibility of the Planning Board, I think, is the most important in the town because the decisions we make actually build and develop the town. So there's a great deal of responsibility placed on us and it's something that I'm delighted to work with and I'm delighted to have the people that we have on this Planning Board. We've always had a great Planning Board and I think we're just continuing on that, having you two join us. So, welcome and I hope you'll find tonight's meeting enjoyable. Our first public hearing, I think it's probably 6:35, isn't it? Someone with a watch?
It will be by the time you finish.
Close enough.
I think you're right. It's for Mark Allen. It's on 19 Burger Lane, which is right off of Slay Quarry Road. It's one of the, maybe the last property in the Town of Rhinebeck, I'm not sure.
Pretty close, yes.
It's for a minor subdivision. It's basically a lot line alteration. So, basically, Mark, if you want to sort of take us through what it is you're proposing to do?
Absolutely, Michael, thank you. It's a property, we currently have, the Allens currently have three acres. My mom, which is, which is right next door to me, Gordon, Gordon and Ann and Alan, they have about 19 acres and the plan is to subdivide the property. So my mom's house, which is on 407 Slay Quarry, gets the minimum required of five acres and then we would keep the remaining of that parcel, which is about 15, so that we would have on our parcel, which is parcel number two on the map here, we would have 18 and my mom's house on 407 Slay Quarry would have the minimum five acres. Because we want to keep the property, most of the property in the Allen Murray name. I'm just not sure if we want to keep two houses. So therefore, if we want to down the road sell my mom's house, she's 92, still with us, but at some point, we're probably gonna move forward if we want to sell that house. And this project began with us wanting to put a garage on parcel number two, but the current lot lines, as they are right now, we would not have the required side yard setbacks. So rather than go through the variance process, we figured, well, if we're gonna do the lot line adjustment anyway down the road, let's do that all together now.
Okay. And I, just one thing I wanted to explain, I didn't explain when we were out there doing the site visit the other day, is what you're doing tonight, the lot line alteration, is independent of applying for a building permit for the garage. So the issue of accessory structures does not apply to what you're doing tonight. Just so you understand, I didn't want you to think that that had to be addressed before we could complete the subdivision process. That'll start up being a potential question when you apply for the building permit for the garage.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay. Melody and I, we did the site visit. Melody, if you'd like to give a report?
Well, as Michael pointed out, this is almost at the extent of the town. Burger Lane is a dead end road and these parcels that, you know, the family parcels that are all contiguous to one another are absolutely spectacular property. And I don't see any problem with the adjustment of the property lines and anything going forward. It's pretty isolated, it's pretty remote. You know, I think all the issues about road frontage and everything have been resolved and addressed. So I don't see any issues going forward with this application whatsoever.
Thank you, Melody. I, I agree. I think it's very straightforward. Basically, it's creating a little less of a non-conformity on one of the lots without creating any greater non-conformities anywhere else. So from a strictly sort of zoning standpoint, it's a positive development in that direction. Is there anyone here from the CAB who has a report for us? I gather not. Any questions from members of the Planning Board, from Mr. Allen? Okie doke. Jim, anyone in the public wish to speak?
I think in the chat box, but we'll give it a second, see if anyone speaks up here. From my perspective, Michael, you and Melody both answered the one question that I had, which was just related to the lot frontage and that's essentially been resolved. They made some, there were some tweaks made in terms of the lot lines. And so now we have two, I believe, conforming lots. So we're in good shape there.
Yeah, I think, I think it's okay.
Yep, I agree. I'm not seeing anyone wanting to ask a question.
Okay. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved, Melody.
Second, Edna.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. I have a resolution. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Mark Allen for a lot line alteration under Town Code Chapter 101 at 19 Burger Lane within the RC5 rural countryside zoning district. We reaffirm our prior classification of the application as a type two under seeker. Based upon review of submitted information, including the reports from the Planning Board members on their site visit to the project property, we find that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives stated in Chapter 101 subdivision of land. With respect to the minor subdivision, we find that their post-action is consistent with Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land, Section 101-4.4. Approve the application inclusive of the minor subdivision plan sheet prepared by Marie Welsh dated December 10th, 2020. We authorize the creation of a flag lot as regulated by Section 125-30B of the Town Zoning Code. We authorize the Planning Board Chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of the below conditions and or requirements within 180 calendar days of the adoption of this resolution. One, the stamping of the subdivision final plat as non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Duchess County Department of Health. Submission of the above cited site survey map in the form and number specified in the Town Code Chapter 101, Section 101-4.4D4, except as need modified to a lesser than number by the Chair in consideration of filing and distribution requirements. Submission of the deeds to be filed with the Duchess County Clerk's Office and payment of any outstanding fees and or reimbursable amounts due to the Town of Rhinebeck related to the review and processing of applications subject to this resolution. Could I hear a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Melody.
Second, Edna.
Thank you, Edna, thank you. Any, any questions before I poll the board? Okay, Kathy?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Belize?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, Mark, what you need to do is just get me that, Maria knows what, how to, how to work this. She'll get that ready for you. As soon as she gets it to me so I can stamp and sign it, you'll want to file that down with the Clerk's Office along with the two deeds for the reconfigured properties and then you're all set to go and apply for the garage building permit.
Okay, so Gretchen sent me another email just to follow up on exactly what I'm supposed to do?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Excellent. And again, I'm sure, I'm sure Marie knows the steps here, but it's nice to have it in writing as well.
Yep, very good.
Excellent, thanks folks.
You're welcome. Take care.
You too now. Bye bye.
Okay, our next public hearing is Hanna Barrett on 317 Mill Road for a site plan and special use permit. We were waiting to actually get a couple things. Among them, and actually an updated application, since the application that's actually before us is for a utility storage shed, but since that was submitted to us and we began the review process, the applicant has decided to add plumbing to the building. There'll be electric, there'll be heat and cooling. Rather than just a storage shed, apparently it would also be used as a area for crafts and storage of artwork as well. So it's not just a simple storage shed for lawn equipment or something like that. So also, she has to work with the Duchess County Department of Health because if she's going to have running water in there, she also has to have a way to dispose of it and she's proposing to use the existing SDS on the property. But since the Health Department has no record of where it is, she has to go out with an engineer, with someone to actually locate it where it is and then determine how the lines would be run to it, to the Health Department's satisfaction. So at this point, we're not in a position to proceed with this application because frankly, we're not entirely sure what it is. So I would like to have a motion to continue this public hearing to February 16th at 6:45 PM, please.
So moved, Melody.
Second, Kathy.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good, thank you.
Michael, over.
Yes.
May I ask a general question?
Absolutely.
What are the conditions under which an application will be for a water resource overlay special permit versus a wetland permit? Since the wetland law includes streams as well as wetlands.
That is a good question.
And she referred me to the comprehensive plan to look at the proposed water resources overlay map, but it is basically a map of the town showing all of the streams.
Yep.
So in this case, I was confused about why this is not an application for a wetland permit.
Okay. Basically, and it's something that I know Jim and I have been talking about and I think Jim's trying to put something together for us. The Army Corps of Engineers has decided that all water bodies, streams, ponds, wetlands, lakes, the Hudson River are all wetlands, which is a little bit difficult because they don't, I don't think that's necessarily appropriate, but that's what they've done. I think the protection that we can give streams and the water resources protection overlay in many instances is greater than the protection we can give them under the wetland law, although under both, a buffer of 100 feet from, well, the high watermark for a stream and the delineated border of a wetland extends out from there. There are times such as this where I think that the protection for a stream is more appropriate than the wetland permit. The only real difference procedurally speaking is that for a wetland permit, the wetland has to be delineated within 12 months of the submittal of the application for a wetland permit. And there is no such requirement for a stream, stream protection since the high water line, you know, probably in spring, something like that, is considered to be the extent of the stream and then the 100 foot buffer extends out from there. So that's the really only difference. Both require, the review process we go through, both require protection. As you know where it exists, a 25 foot natural buffer, riparian zone buffer, is required to be preserved. And in most cases, of course, in the town where there's development already, it's usually lawn right down to the stream, something like that, so it no longer exists. But that's why in this case, we just put our heads together and we felt the more appropriate protection would be the water resource protection overlay for streams. But that's, that's basically the difference from a procedural standpoint. Does that answer your question?
When we received the application for Barrett, it did not have any delineation of the buffer line. Would that be typical for a water resource overlay application versus a wetland application?
Ordinarily, we asked to see the buffer. I think given the small size of the property and the location of the stream, it was obvious that what she was proposing to do was within the buffer. So I don't believe that that, in this instance, was necessarily any sort of drawback in our beginning to do a proper review of what she's proposing to do. As I said, since what she's proposing to do appears to have changed significantly, we're at a point of standstill. I don't know when she's gonna get back to us, how she would like to proceed.
How about the 25 foot riparian buffer line? Should, would you think that in the future we might want that if we're gonna have a water resource overlay application?
I think if it exists, yes. In this case, of course, it no longer exists. So it's, it's not there to be protected unfortunately. And in a great many of the applications we get where things have already been developed throughout the town, that no longer exists.
I didn't read the law.
I'm sorry?
I could certainly be mistaken. I thought the, I read the law as requiring the buffer.
It's required that it be preserved, but it does not speak to the fact that it has to be basically resuscitated in place, which is perhaps something we should look into doing. But the language itself basically spoke to the preservation of the natural buffer. And if it doesn't exist, you can't preserve it. And if you really wish it to be, you know, replaced, that's one of the conditions that we can place upon a, an applicant if we feel it's appropriate. But that would be a condition of approval because it's not specified specifically in the law. It's something that has to be done, regardless of whether or not the Planning Board feels it's appropriate.
So what part of the water resource overlay section of the zoning law did you think was maybe a little more, required a bit more than the wetland permit?
Basically, if there is a riparian area that still exists, it's to preserve that, which we don't have to do under the wetland permit.
Thanks.
And I think it is something, when we do do permits for stream protection, if we feel it's appropriate and the conditions of the site, things of that sort, what's going on up, let's say we say uphill or whatever from a stream, we have in the past and we can certainly do it in the future, require plantings in there to try and recreate a protective riparian area to prevent fertilizer soil dirt, all that sort of stuff from rushing down into the stream during storms and things of that sort. So that is something that we always have the opportunity to do if we feel it's appropriate. Okay, we have two new, well, we have one new application and one continuing application. The new application is Dave's Tree Service Route 9G Site Plan and Review. Is Dave here or his representative?
Yeah, I'm Dave. Dave's here.
And Mark is also.
Let me tell the planning board what it is you want to do.
Good evening, everyone. So this application is for a site plan special permit. And it's for Dave's Tree Service, properties located on the southwesterly side of Route 9G, just a little bit to the south of its intersection with 199, the Bridge Approach. The parcel size is about 11 and a half acres in size. There's a existing drive access at the southeast corner of the property that enters, and Jim's got the arrow there, there's a, there's a roadway, existing roadway that enters into the property to the west. And you can see on this, there's, there's three, three, this plan set. You can see on Sheet 1, which is the existing conditions plan, that there's a driveway, you can see by the woods, the tree line that's shown through there. There's a, there's a existing drive entrance and then into an area that's cleared almost in the center of the property. Current zoning of the property is Gateway North. And being proposed is a, is a, a, this is for, as I said, for Dave's Tree Service. It's for a parcel for location of a business office. And so this particular application was submitted to the zoning administrator who determined it was an allowable use for a business office and for, I believe it's classified as forest management. When you take a look at the second sheet, which Jim has up now, the site developed in such a way that has, as I said before, there's an existing access on 9G. That access is, is just slightly moved based on site meeting with New York State DOT, but generally in the same location, just moved a little bit to accommodate DOT requirements. Access route, and so that'll be a standard minor commercial access as required by DOT. So that's a, that's a paved and curved access point. From there, traveling to the west into the property is a gravel driveway. It's approximately 20 feet width. Generally, as you can see, that tree line is still shown on this plan. It's at a, it's at a larger scale to, to show some more detail. It'll be a 20 foot wide gravel driveway with some drainage improvements along the way to handle existing stormwater runoff and to conform to the existing stormwater drainage patterns. And then as you enter in to that, once again, I'll just go back to the reference to that existing clarity area. So that's now being, so that's now shown and is being utilized to develop an area for both, for multiple uses. One to location of the building on the property and which will, the purpose of that building is one for an office and then also it's a, a, a structure for, for vehicle storage. And, and then also shown with the, on this, on this plan is an area to the, to the north of the, of that building. That'll be for equipment and vehicle parking and, you know, and maneuvering through there. So there's various spots that are shown for the parking. That, that too will be a gravel surface. And then finally, you can see some of the regrading that's shown in this area and it's with the dash lines, the existing contours are solid, the post contours are dash lines for some stormwater management areas to, you know, to handle the minor change in cover type from, from the existing, you know, conditions to a, you know, a gravel parking and maneuvering area along with the building. And so those, those are stormwater management areas. The, the site will also require Duchess County Department of Health approval for a small sewage disposal system for the office. And that's just, basically, it's a small office for, you know, for Dave to conduct business. He generally meets clients on site, but it's mainly for just a small business office. And then there's approximately, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, six to eight employees that'll be using this facility.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, and so we've actually, just with a conservative design for the septic system, it's designed for 10 people to be using it. I note that, you know, just back to the building, that it's just, there'll be no vehicle maintenance on this property. And, you know, and Dave, when I'm done here, just feel free to speak up with anything that I have missed, is that Dave has all the maintenance on his vehicles. He has another location across the river in Ulster. And so maintenance in all the buildings will be in Ulster. And then also finally, there's just, you know, minor lighting on the site, some, some wall mounted units on, on the building just for, you know, access at night. And, and as you can see, generally with regard to the, to the layout for this, for this site, the intent has to been, has been to, once again, utilize the existing area that's, that's already been cleared and also to screen this, screen the building and the, the parking and just, you know, turning area for, for the vehicles. It'll be, it'll basically be screened from all locations. From Route 9G, neighbors to the, to the west and also to the south. It's basically tucked into the woods. There's some, there's some, you know, specimen trees that are on the property that have been field located. And, you know, the, the, the existing layout is, has been respectful of those trees, you know, along with the existing, you know, the existing topography and, and site features, existing features of the site. So it's, you know, just summed up, we tried to tuck it into an area where it's, it's secluded and, and then at the same time serves the purpose of what Dave's trying to accomplish here. Have a, have a local, have a building for, you know, for his, for his crews, which typically are only in, they come in in the morning. You know, everyone's coordinated on jobs to, to go to, go out to a job, come back in the evening. Vehicles are shut down and then either left in the yard or also parked in the, in the building. Seth, can you think of anything else to?
Cover, think all of the major topics.
How about you, Dave? Anything else that you think I should discuss?
You did a good job, Mark. Just, it's, it's definitely gonna be hid. You won't be able to see it from, from any of the houses or any, you know, any road, that's for sure.
Okay. That's it, Michael.
That's it? Okay, members of the planning board, any questions for, for Mark or Dave?
Yeah, I have one question. Do you see a future of a paved driveway?
I don't believe so. Just gonna, just gonna keep it stone.
I read something about firewood processing. What's, what's that?
I, I sell firewood, so some firewood would be processed there. Not a huge operation, like a quarter or two goes out. It's not a, mostly it's just for storage for, for vehicles.
Would it, would there be storage of logs to be cut up for firewood?
Yes.
And what do you think the quantity would be at any one time?
Three or, three or four cord is all you fit on a truck. You just fit three or four cord on a, on one of my small log trucks. So at any given time, you might bring that there and then cut it and split it.
And where would that be on this site plan? Where would that go on?
Probably in that, in that cleared area there, that's, that's used for the trucks right there, that's being circled.
Dave, is, is that a small change from the discussion we had out there a week or so ago when Melody and I were out there?
No, it's the same, the same thing.
I'm sure.
I thought we were not going to have any processing of wood out there.
Okay, if that's.
That was my, that was the impression I left with.
Okay.
There would not be processing out there.
Okay, I mean, it's not gonna be a.
But it would be the upper storage.
I mean, it's mostly, mostly gonna be stored for my, for my trucks and my equipment.
Right.
It's not gonna be a big firewood processing center by any means. I don't, I don't sell that much of it. And if that's, and if that's a hangup, that's, that's fine. I'll do it in Kingston like I'm doing it now, you know?
Yeah, I, I think that was the discussion because the potential noise, potential noise issues. A few neighbors around there and I think the person just to the south of you
Yeah.
is proposing to put in a motel, we probably would be somewhat.
Yeah, that's, that's not a, that's not a huge, you know, business that I have anyway. There's no reason why I can't do that in Kingston. That's fine.
Yeah, that's, that's basically what I thought I remembered when we sort of decided just to make sure we didn't have any noise issues that had to be addressed.
Yeah, I remember that. Yeah, I remember that. Okay.
Any other questions from members of the planning board?
Michael, this is Jim. I, this is Jim. I do have one quick question for Dave. Remember we were out, we looked at the site, I don't know, maybe a month or two ago. I'd asked you about the billboard and the potential for that to be removed and whether or not that was something you could look into or consider. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I had my, my attorney look into that. And right now it's in a contract with, that goes to Clear Channel, the owners of the billboard company. They're in contract, not to, it would go to me when I buy the property, but it's in contract till, I think, the end of 2023. So they have to, legally, they have to remain in lease until then.
Right, yeah, I figured that might be the case that they had a lease. Would you be willing to consider as a, as part of this that you would remove it when that lease is up? Or would you intend to keep that billboard on site?
The, the, the problem that I have with that is the, the billboard company actually has first refusal to this land.
Okay.
So the owner that I'm buying it from has to give them written notice and gives them the first refusal. So I don't want to, I really don't want to bring that part into it, taking that down with fear of them purchasing the land out from under me.
Oh, so you're not, you're not purchasing the land, you're leasing the land?
No, I'm buying the land, but they have first refusal. The billboard company. It's right in my contract.
Oh, and the contract you have now to purchase the land, you're saying?
Yes, yeah.
I got you.
Right. You know, I don't like the billboards. I'll say that. But I really, I can't make that, I can't, you know what I mean? I can't put that in stone because I'm, I don't want to lose that property. And it, it gives them the opportunity to buy it out from, you know, out from under me and then all this is for nothing.
Okay, so you can't commit to that.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yep, yeah, you can't commit to that because of the, because of the contract laying with the other issues. Okay.
Yeah, no, I don't want to, it's my honest opinion, for sure.
Does that change after the contract runs out and you own the property?
If, in 2000, in 2023, I believe.
Okay. So there is the opportunity in the future, once you own it and the contract is absed, to make a different decision.
My, my attorney's looking into that with them.
Okay.
But I, as long as that's okay, then, then I don't have an issue with it. But I can't, I can't commit to any of that. I can't be part of this because I, I don't want to lose that money or the property.
I, I understand, I didn't, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted, I wanted to ask, as you know, I'd raised that before, but that certainly is the.
I'm not married to him by any means. I don't, I don't like him, but I think we're on the same page. You know what I mean?
But you can't, we can't commit to that as part of the resolution. That, I got it, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. That's it for me, Michael.
And I think in fairness too, the town does have in its new zoning law plan, a procedure where it was going to allow existing billboards to last for so many years to amortize the costs. And then the town was going to go through a procedure to have them removed. The town has chosen not to do that to date. I, then in the future, they might down the road somewhere. But the town itself at this point has chosen not to take any action against the billboards in the town. So that's a, another step.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave? Or for Mark? Okay, I have a procedural resolution. The town of Rhinebeck's planning board hereby acts as follows on the application by Dave's Tree Service for a site plan approval under Town Code Chapter 125 for property along Route 9G within the Gateway North zoning district. We accept the application and supporting documents as adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors and the public. Reclassified proposed action is type 2 under secret, which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. We're scheduling a public hearing on the application for February 16th.
There'll be six, waiting for Gretchen, six? Six fifty. Michael, are you still there?
I'm here now.
Okay.
How far?
We got to schedule, yep, at six fifty on 16th.
Very good. And we're going to delegate planning board members. I was wondering if maybe Edna and possibly Sean would like to do a site visit for this project?
Sure.
Would that be okay?
Is that okay with you, Sean? You're muted.
Pardon me, yeah, 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 thank you. Yes, that's fine.
Very good. And to conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. And in accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, we'll refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comments concerning environmental factors. And we're authorizing without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referral. Preparation of a working draft with an approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on February 16th or as may be later timely. Could I motion to approve, please?
So would Melanie.
I can add now.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Dave, Mark, Edna and Sean will get in touch with you about a time to do a site visit out there.
Okay, great.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. We have one more. This is a continuing application that we have here. This is for KPH2 Management, T Court LLC, Brindle Valley and Ferncliff Nursing Home. This is the master plan application. We've been waiting on this. I mean, one of the things we've been waiting for and perhaps Mark, I think is still here, I hope, can tell me, did Howard, have you guys received the latest review of Carrie's CLR from Charles Bernbaum? You know, if that's been received.
We, we have not heard anything from Charles.
Okay. Because I know he has it and I know he's working on it, but I will, I'll send him an email and see where we are with that.
Sure.
Okay. Mark, particularly, I don't think lease has ever been part of sort of the overall plan. And I know that Sean and Joe haven't been. So possibly you could sort of give a nice sort of walkthrough on what's proposed on the properties, explain the relationship of the properties to one another. And anything else you think might be of interest?
Yeah, Michael, I'm prepared to do that. If I can share my screen, but Mark will give you a general introduction on, on the permit.
Okay, however you guys want to do, it's fine.
Yeah, Howard was going to handle the, you know, the proposal for, you know, this amended master plan application. And so I guess for me, Michael, it's a question of how far back should I go for? For the existing.
Well, not the one, not the one the glacier came down the Hudson, that's too far.
It's almost that long ago.
Yeah, well, well, help, just help us here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just because we've got a short meeting doesn't mean you get all the rest of the night.
Okay, I will, I'll be quick. So, so basically, Jim, if you could switch back to the, the first sheet or, or cover sheet? Yeah, and so I'll, I'll just start with this is because what it does is it shows an overall view of the properties. And so, so this application is for, there, there's three, there's three applicants involved in this project. So it's KPH2 Management LLC, which, yeah, that's great. Thank you, Jim. So in, so in the upper left hand corner, Jim's pointing to that parcel. Next parcel to the north, Jim, would be T Court LLC, which is kind of an oddly shaped piece. It's got frontage, it's got in two locations on River Road. It's got that one, two east of where Jim's arrow is. And then also, if you go to the middle of the property, yeah, right there. And then there's the second access. And that second access is a flag portion that goes to the west and then shoots back to the north. And then right where Jim's arrow is now, yeah, that's, and then where Jim's arrow is now, to the southwest is Brindle Valley LLC. And so that, that property is also involved in this application. So there are, there are three, there are three applicants. And so the one thing that I would also note where, of course, it's, it's, there, there was a minor, there's, there's been a minor change to the T Court LLC property. Because mid, in the fall of last year, we may have actually started it in the summer. T Court LLC purchased 11 acres from Liebowitz, Annie Liebowitz, which is SS Farm LLC, right where Jim's arrow is in that upper left hand corner. And it was, it was actually, it was a lot line alteration. So that 11 acres was combined with the T Court property. And so that's, that's now, and, and so that was one of the items that needed to be completed before we could get back in front of the planning board for continued discussion of the master plan. So, and there's, you know, without going into too much detail, this, this, this first sheet shows the zoning information for those various parcels, acreage, ownership, et cetera. So Jim, if you could go to sheet two. So there's, there's a total of three sheets within this, in the plan set that I prepared. Howard Williams with Hollander, Ed Hollander Associates has also, has a plan that I think he'll use in his description of what's being proposed for this amended master plan. But so, and I, I've shown that on my third sheet, which we won't get to, I'll let Howard, you know, discuss that. But so here's sheet two. And what, what the goal is on this sheet is to, you know, try to visually depict the, you know, the, obviously the existing conditions, existing structures that exist on the, on the, on the three part properties, part of this, you know, master plan consideration. Also joiners, because Ferncliff joins to the, joins to the north and that, that nursing home is, is shown. So it's showed, showing, you know, existing physical features, topography, intermittent water courses, wetland areas, accessed roads that, that exist between the properties there for the most part interconnected with the exception of Brindle Valley. It's also, it's also referred to as Brindle Brook. That's, that's the piece to the south and it butts, it butts River Road. That, and that, that currently has its, has its own access. Access for both KPH2 Management, which Jim, yeah, is in that arrow. And that's where the, it was commonly referred to as Astor Courts, where Aster's Athletic Building is located. That has, that has access just, just to the north of Brindle Valley in that strip that Jim's going along now. And that's, and that was originally a common drive access for both KPH2 Management LLC and also T Court LLC. It was formerly Robert Duffy's and then T Court purchased it. And so that was access. And that was, at one time, that was the only access until Robert Duffy purchased some of the property to the, would be the Northeasternly portion. That was, that was under other ownership. He purchased that property, combined it, and now that's the second access for T Court LLC. That's, that's in the northeast portion of T Court. And so, once again, I'm, I'm saying it's showing existing physical features, the roads, the buildings that already exist on the property. What I've also tried to do on this plan is to show graphically some of the previous applications that have been made for, I'm just trying to think now. I guess in, and it's the applications that have only been made for KPH2 Management. And they are, I'll, I'll just kind of, you know, I'll, I'll just try to quickly go through them because I, I don't want to, you know, belabor this too much. But there were some improvements around, you know, the Astor Courts building. There were, you know, so, some improvements to, there was a, a parking and formal garden area located on the north end of the property. There was a application for geothermal wells located just to the north of that improvement that I just mentioned. There was an application for solar panels to be put on the roof of that structure. There was an application to the south of, of the Astor Courts building for a pool that was, that's Jim circling right there. There was also an application, if you go to the west of that gym, there was an application for improvement. Well, first of all, I think it was, it was rehabilitation first for the powerhouse building because it was in such disrepair. And then an application that was made, and, and I should note that these, all these applications that I'm referring to were approved by the planning board and in some instances have been implicated, implemented by the applicant and owner for the, so that one was for the powerhouse. There was a, a application, what was that, Seth?
For the play lawn?
Oh, yeah, there was also an application for the play lawn that was just a little bit to the south of the main building. And then actually Seth reminded me, there was an application for a roof deck to be put on in its, in conjunction with the solar panels. In addition, there's been, you know, application for the, originally it was for restoration of Aster's boathouse located on the west side of the railroad tracks, generally in that area where Jim is circling. And that is an ongoing application with New York State BEC and, and several other state and federal agencies. That's a, that's an ongoing application. There was, there was an application which is currently being constructed for underground utilities for, for actually, it's for the three properties that I, that I've just referenced. And also it included, I, I mentioned earlier, Ferncliff Nursing Home is located to the north. And so there was an application made and approved by the planning board last fall for underground utilities to be installed for both, actually for all four properties. And as I said, that was approved and that's, that construction is actually ongoing right now. We just finally started that a couple of weeks ago. Let's see. Oh, and then that application for underground utilities also included restoration of the service drive into, into Astor Courts with the utilities going along a portion of that. And then.
Sorry.
That's okay. I guess they've had it. They don't want to hear anymore.
It wasn't me, it wasn't me. Sorry, that was me.
All right, that's okay. So, and, and, and so that, that is, that's also ongoing and, and under construction. I think that's, you know, a, a summary of, and so that, that work also went through, you know, a, a previous master plan that was approved in the beginning of 2017. And then those various individual, individual, individual applications that I just referred to were, were subsequently made, you know, over, over a period of time. And so here we are back for a revision to the master plan. That includes some, you know, some additional, you know, that, that includes additional proposal of work to be done. That'll be described by Howard Williams.
Thank you, Mark.
Michael, is it possible for me to share my screen so that I can go through the presentation?
I have no idea. That's, Jim's actually handling the technical, technical aspect of this.
We do have your plan in our set, Howard. It is in.
Yes, yes, I have plenty of other details and zooms in images of that. That'll help make everything clear. Uh, yes, yes, I have plenty of other details and, and zooms in images of that, that'll help make everything clearer. So if it's possible to share my screen, it would.
So technically, Howard, unfortunately, we, we came up with a policy when we started doing Zoom that we aren't allowing for anyone to show, um, individual files unless they are forwarded to the, to Gretchen first. It's just a general policy.
Uh, okay.
Kind of figured if it's, you know, it needs to be a policy for kind of one and all.
Just to.
Um, to make sure that we know exactly what's being put up on the screen, since this is being taped and broadcast. Um, so hopefully you can work within what you've got, so we can stay within that policy.
Okay, uh, and is it, uh, possible for me to, to submit that presentation for the next, uh, the next hearing?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, we just, all files before they get, essentially get broadcast, we want them to go to Gretchen and, and be reviewed by me.
Sure, sure. Okay, understood. And so if you could put up the, the master plan.
Howard, that, that is, uh, that is the policy that we agreed on, and I should have, I should have remembered that, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, that's fine, because a lot of what, uh, I have to say could be more valuable once we get past the, the secret portion of this and you're reviewing it more closely. Um, so if you can go to the, the rendered plan, Jim? Yes. Um, at this scale, it's going to be a little difficult for you to, to see what I am describing. But as we go through this process, uh, with subsequent hearings and, uh, and particularly with site review, um, I think it'll become a bit clearer.
I can zoom in if you want, Howard, if you want to need to zoom in.
Okay, I may, I may ask you to, as, as we, as we go through this, but, um, just to start off with, just to, to add into the, sort of the big picture that, um, that Mark started to describe. Um, this is the former, a portion of the former Aster estate. There were three generations of Aster families living on this property. And, um, I think as many people in the town are aware, uh, originally, you know, the vast extent of this, of this estate, the Ferncliff Estate was almost, uh, three thousand acres of land running from the Hudson River all the way to, to Route nine G in town. Um, what we have is a small portion of that property. If, if the, if the, uh, the larger estate consisted of forest, farmlands, extensive orchards, um, there was also some parkland, and that parkland is, is what was the, the residential core of the estate. Um, we own a portion of that, probably about fifty percent of that parkland. It's, it's what, uh, uh, two of these, these properties, the Astor Courts property and the Tea House property, um, comprise about fifty percent of that, that core parkland. Um, the rest of that was, uh, where the Ferncliff Nursing Home sits currently. Um, just in the middle of all our, our property access along River Road. Um, the, uh, the, um, you know, the, the, if you could actually zoom in, Jim, just in that center area of the property between the two structures. Um, yes, my client purchased, um, each of these properties, they actually, uh, did this, um, sequentially over several years. Um, we've discovered more possibilities of combine, of, um, of, uh, restoration of this park and, and, and bringing it back to some of its, um, original, um, aesthetic appearance. The, um, uh, the requirement of the cultural landscape report, uh, which, uh, the planning board required in 2019, actually has opened up, uh, my client's eyes in particular to, uh, a number of, 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 of areas where we could do some effective restoration of this initial core part of the property. So we're calling this really the, the historic central park of the property, and that, um, is outlined here in the dark dashed line. And what that is, is mostly large, open, flowing, rolling grass lawns with, um, uh, you know, driveway running through the middle of it, and, uh, it's with a certain number of trees around that driveway. Um, nowhere, currently nowhere near close to the amount of trees that were along this driveway um, in the original, um, uh, Aster days. Um, should point out in this plan, in the, um, uh, where the Tea House, uh, is, there's a circular area there, yes, where you're pointing to circular now, that L area, right where your cursor is now. That was the original site of the mansion house, uh, for the, uh, the Ferncliff Estate. Uh, that, that mansion was demolished in the nineteen forties, and the, uh, the Vincent Aster, um, the last Aster to live on the property, moved into the Astor Courts building. Uh, he did build a small tea pavilion, uh, which is the, that octagonal, um, shaped structure, uh, in the white area of the Tea House. That, uh, that was expanded in subsequent decades by subsequent owners to become a residence. Um, and they also built in a pool that's there, and a few other, uh, sort of many buildings. So that, that part of the, the, the estate is no longer, um, uh, the accurate to the, the Astridays. But much of what is in this view that you're looking at currently, um, remains relatively intact minus some of its landscape features. And one of those, some of those things that we would like to do in order to bring it back to what we, um, have learned it was back in, in, uh, the Aster's days, is in the center of the green lawn, there is a, the path of a, you can see in this plan of the subdivision driveway that led to the Astor Courts building. Yes, yes, right there. That will be removed in order to open up this lawn area to be the, you know, in, in uninterrupted flowing, um, grass area. Uh, the, uh, the, the main driveway, um, currently is actually split from where that driveway we're removing turns towards Astor Courts. If you, um, you know, if you look to the north of that, which is to the right on this, uh, on this drawing, that section of driveway from there over to Tea House, um, was removed, um, during the subdivision, and we are proposing that we restore that. Yes, that area right there. Um, south of that, uh, that section of the driveway, um, is the area where we had the unfortunate occurrence of the removal of the locust trees, um, back into two thousand and twenty, or two thousand and nineteen, um, which precipitated the cultural landscape report. Um, as part of our, uh, addressing that particular issue, um, we had a, a remediation plan, tree remediation plan of planting new trees approved by the zoning enforcement officer. Um, that work is now done, and I did have some images of that I would like to have shown you. But, um, what that consists of is, um, the twenty-five large caliber, um, uh, good-sized mature trees. Um, these trees are, are, uh, are anywhere from about, um, twelve to fourteen inches in caliber and about thirty, thirty-five feet tall. So they're, they're significant trees. Um, once we planted that, uh, these trees, my client was able to see, um, uh, just, just the, the, the effective value of that kind of restoration. And he then looking back through what, what, uh, what Carrie Colleen, um, pulled up in the cultural landscape report, saw a number of areas where there no longer are such, where there were trees of, of that kind of stature on the estate. We'd like to bring them back. Um, one of those areas is the, uh, the area around the former mansion, um, where the L is on the, that circular area that we're indicating previously. Um, the mansion originally was surrounded by quite a few large shade trees. We'd like, as you can see in this plan, we'd like to, to bring back a number of those. Um, the cultural landscape report also contains a nineteen oh six survey that, um, uh, is, is for the central core area that indicates every tree that was on the property, it identifies them in species and, and size, um, which very interesting, uh, bit of information for us. So we'd like to use that plan in order to locate these trees. Um, the, the types of species of trees that are in that nineteen oh six plan are many that are available to us today. Maples, um, lindens, tulip trees. Um, it did include a good number of elm trees, which, uh, with Dutch elm disease, they're, such trees are no longer available to us. So, uh, we'll have to replace those with something else, but we're, we're really using that nineteen oh six plan to, um, to determine the location and to some degree the species, um, that will go along in this area. Um, that nineteen oh six, uh, plan, uh, plan also shows in the area that we're calling the West Valley in this plan, um, the right side of that, like the, the area of that right arrow currently is a wooded area. But in nineteen oh six, it's shown to have no trees in that, in that area. And we have subs- several, um, historic images, um, a painted photograph and some older photographs from, say, the nineteen forties. Uh, and then the nineteen forty, um, aerial photograph that shows that particular area being clear of trees, um, just to be in an open meadow. And what that was, was, um, uh, most likely a view corridor from the original mansion south across the Hudson River towards the, the Shawagon Mountains. Uh, and, uh, in the presentation that I can show you then, in the, in the next hearing, you can see some photographs, uh, that make that very clear. So we'd like to, to ask to clear those more recent trees in that particular area, keeping all of the mature trees along its edges, um, but just to open that up again to, to be what it was back in, in, uh, the early days of, of the estate. Um, to jump them from that, uh, to, uh, to the Tea House itself. Um, there are currently, uh, a, a number of, of landscape improvements that were done in the, um, seventies and again, and then big effort than in the nineties, um, that are, um, not exactly what, uh, you know, I think is some of the caliber of a, a grand estate like this. Um, in particular, there's in front of the building between, between the house and the pool, there is currently a parking court, yes, right in there, a very unfortunate location for a parking court. So that one has to actually walk through the parked cars to get to your swimming pool. We're proposing just moving that slightly to the north and converting that area into, uh, into a formal garden or an, an entry kind of garden for the property. There are a number of other small improvements, um, around this part of the property, uh, including, um, we putting new pavement around the swimming pool, adding a pergola, changing the pool fence, which is currently is, is, is a bit awkwardly relating to the pool pavilion, which is a small, um, uh, white octagonal building to the left there. Um, we'd like to incorporate that into the, the pool fence area. Um, other small things in this, uh, area that's shown as F currently in, in this drawing or in, in, on the site is a, a basement, uh, uh, garage entry. Um, since we are now moving the parking court and there's no longer access to that, we'll just change that into a sunken, um, a small garden court. Uh, we'd like to expand some of the terraces at the rear of the house, where the letter G is, and. We'll include a small fire pit and off to the right, um, other service, uh, the service parking in the J area next to that. And, um, I guess it's important also to note, um, where A is on this plan. There currently is, is a, a driveway, it's a contemporary driveway, um, which really would have ran right through the footprint of the original mansion. Uh, we're proposing to eliminate that and use what's currently a back driveway in that B area, and just use that as access to the, uh, to the new parking court. Um, and then this area also includes, um, there, there is a small cottage, existing cottage, uh, along that driveway. So where, uh, you see the letter K, we're proposing a three, a park, a three, three bay garage um, to replace the, uh, basement garage that we no longer have access to in the Tea House building. Um, Jim, if you could just swing over to Astor Courts. Okay, at the same kind of zoom level, we can talk about that. A little bit more. Yeah, now this area, and if you could go down a little bit to get the, um, the, the powerhouse in the view as well. Um, so always doing that. Um, these are the areas that Mark has, um, said are already, uh, approved in a previous application. The front entry, whoops, uh, it's like, it's the front entry court, the play lawn behind the house and the swimming pool. Um, those are already approved. Um, the, uh, the front parking court is currently under construction and should be finished by next spring. Um, the other two areas are currently just on hold. Um, we have some small work to do at the, the, uh, the powerhouse that's currently, it's just an area that's, uh, completely surrounded by gravel. We're proposing to, to limit that amount of gravel area of the small parking area and then just some small gravel walkways to access points in the building and a small, um, terrace off the south end. No other work really prepared or, or called for there. Um, the only other addition around Astor Courts from the previous applications are two hedge mazes. As you can see, um, just next to the swimming pool. Um, uh, one kind of, uh, loose organically, uh, squiggly, and the other one more of a, a rigid, um, uh, rectilinear kind of form. Um, these were just, these are just, um, hedge, hedges, uh, hedge mazes. Hedges of about, uh, anywhere, ultimately growing to six to seven feet high and maintained as that. And these are just, uh, uh, just pleasure mazes. Um, note, and they're both in currently cleared areas of the, of the estate, you know, areas of previous disturbance. Um, I believe Kathy had her orchard, um, where the, uh, the top one is. And then, um, uh, the, the other one is currently an area that's been, or it's been used for, for quite a few years as a, uh, a staging area for service of, of Astor Courts, so we'll be cleaning that area up. Um, Jim, can you swing down now to, uh, to the Brindle Brook property?
Hold on, sorry for that.
Jim, just let me say that Kathy, uh, just notified me that she can't get back on. She was dropped off and can't get back on.
Yeah.
She apologizes.
Okay, uh, Brind- Brindle Brook, um, just, um, as for, for, uh, the new members of the, um, of the board. Brindle Brook is a slightly different property from the rest of the estate. Um, it, it, uh, the, the structures on this property pre-exist. The Aster's, uh, development of their estate, um, includes a, a main house and several barns. Um, uh, the main house in, in, in all of the Aster maps is called out as a tenant's house and the, um, uh, the, the barns are, are labeled as shops. So this was kind of a side area to the, the, uh, the overall estate. Um, uh, nonetheless, um, it, it has some, uh, some beautiful aesthetic values and you probably have seen by driving down River Road. Um, our only proposals here, uh, is to change the driveways. Currently, the driveway from the main house swings to the left of the pond that you see here and runs straight up to River Road. And there is a similar type of road from the pool house, meaning just looping around and straight up to, uh, to River Road. Um, just for security reasons, um, our, our client would like to be able to install a, 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 he has a security gate on the other, um, uh, Aster driveway. Um, we'd like to install a security gate along this access point as well. And just wants the, um, the driveways to then come off of a point after that security gate. So in this case, then, uh, the main driveway will swing around to the, uh, the north side of the, of the pond directly to the house. And then the driveway to the, um, to the pool house. We're thinking of that just as a farm type of road, which is just, um, two gravel tracks with the, uh, grass strip in the middle. Um, more of a seasonal driveway than, than, than the typical paved driveway. Um, uh, and then one other feature in here, which is, is new from our previous applications. Um, a client has asked for a, uh, basketball half court. Uh, and we're just, so, setting that indiscreetly behind one of the barns. And as you can see in this plan, there's, uh, plenty of existing, uh, uh, trees, many of them evergreens that scream that, uh, that basketball court from, from River Road.
Um. Howard, um, just a question, Melody. Um, the road that's coming in, going to the main house and the barns. Um, now below that, is that another road? What is that? Sort of looks like a hatched line.
Yeah, that's, that's the, um, that's this, this farm track road that I'm describing that goes to the pool house. Um, because we, we do need to have, uh, vehicular access to the, to the pool house.
Were they both there before or is one new?
Uh, no, but, well, both, both are new. Um, uh, but they, they're, the, the current, um, driveway. But they, they're, the, the current driveway to the pool house comes, as just as this one does, comes off to the left, from the left of the pool house, but then just runs straight to River Road from there. But for, as I said, for, for security reasons, we need to swing that around to, to after the proposed gate.
Jim, Kathy wants to be let back in. Sorry. I'm sorry, Howard, to keep.
Yeah, no, that's fine. We'd like to have Kathy with us. Jim, while we're waiting for that too, if you can swing over to the new property that we purchased from from Annie. Yes, yes. Okay, that's good right there. One, before I start talking about the train. This smaller kind of oval dashed area around the driveway, that's another tree restoration area. We, we have a number of etchings from the late eighteen hundreds. You'll use along this section of the driveway that show plenty of trees along it, kind of a loosely structured alley of trees. And the nineteen forties aerial photographs show plenty of trees along that area. We currently have about maybe five of those original trees still standing. They're not in particularly good health. But we'd like to, to, to bring back that kind of stature of tree to that section of the, of the driveway as well. And there's some unfortunate planting that was done by a previous owner to screen for a nursing home that are, that's directly along that driveway. We'd like to remove, there's an earthen berm that he planted on. We'd like to remove that as well. So that's all part of, of restoring the more like shade tree kind of alley along this section of the driveway. And then one more thing before I get into the, the train as well. To the left of that there, and just north of the Front Cliff Nursing Home, there's an existing small service structure, yes, in that area. And we're just proposing adding a new five bay service garage to that too, just for equipment to, to manage the, the estate landscape. A couple of small, just material, landscape material storage bins and more parking. All of which, all of which will be amply screened from Burn Cliff Nursing Home, as well as from views within the property itself. Then to get to, to the train, the, the reason for, for, for much of our delays in getting back to you, as Mark said, was the purchase of the eleven acres from, from Annie. Which is really the right side of the, of this, of this drawing. That was because this was the original area where Vincent Astor built his, his miniature train. And that train started on a small, or was on a, a former tennis court, which he demolished first, and then he put the southern loop of his train. And that's where we're showing some of our train structures, a, a car barn and round house. Right in the center of the, of the area. Vincent Astor's train, then, not that one, that's the carriage house, the next one down, yeah, those areas. That's the, that was the beginning of Vincent Astor's train and it ran north, which is to the right on this page, up to the pond that's on Annie's property and looped around again where, where actually Vincent had his roundhouse and car barn. Annie was only willing to sell us the eleven acres, not a larger portion of, of her property. So, but she was kind enough to enter into an easement agreement with us for the extent of train that we would like to put in. And so you can see in this drawing, some of the train in, in the shaded portion of the drawing, which is still part of SSS farms. But we have an easement to, to run along that particular lawn. So what the train is, for the new members, this is just a miniature train. It's a seven and a half inch track separation. Each train is, each car is probably only about twenty to twenty-four inches tall. The typical car can be six feet long, an engine can be about ten feet long. They're ridible, just, just large enough to, to carry an adult. So this, this is really quite small. Being small, it doesn't have a particularly powerful engine on it. So if these, these types of trains can only manage a 1.6% grade change, which is almost flat. So we tried to put the train on as, as level of ground as we could find in this, in this part of the property. And except it's, it's a rather hilly terrain here, as it is on almost all of, of this estate. So where we, where we cannot keep it on, on level grade, we have to install vertical trestles in order to keep the train line relatively level. And these can, these will vary from just a few feet to twenty, twenty-five feet. That's, that's maximum. But since the ravines are fairly deep. If you, Jim, if you zoom in just a little bit more, you can see, I did a double line around the areas that are the, the trestle. So you can insert marks through here, you can see that aspect of it.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah. Now this, this layout, it's got four loops in its, its center part. And there is a short spur that runs along the driveway in woods, within the woods, along the driveway up towards Tea House. So that my client and guest can simply come out of the Tea House, get on that part of the train and then be ridden into the core part of the, the property. Other elements within this. And one thing I'd like to say about, about the train itself, we've been very careful to, to lay this out in such a way that we're really not doing any, or we're doing very, very minimal disturbance to the existing woodlands. It's the, the track itself, since it really only requires a four foot wide gravel bed. Does not, you know, does not require a lot of clearing adjacent to it. One of the reasons to do these trestles is so that we don't have to actually go in there and make large grade changes within the area, do a lot of excavation, cutting and filling. The, the trestle, while it may seem like it's a significant structure, is actually very thin steel members that lightly touch the ground just at, you know, a couple of points with a, a small concrete footing. We're, we're carefully looking at the logistics to build this in such a way that we do not clear adjacent trees. It's a, it'll simply be a narrow path through the existing woods.
Howard, is there language in the easement with Annie to define what you can do on her property?
Yes, yes. And, and, and the communication that we have to engage in with her.
And do we have copies of that easement?
Yes, I included it, Melody.
Okay, thank you.
Last element in this, in this, oh, two, two elements in this layout. At the bottom of the screen, you can see there's a small little squiggly line area, yes, right there. That is going to be a, a even smaller miniature train. It's called a G scale train, which is really a G for garden scale. This, this is really just a small garden with, this is the kind of, of, the scale of train that, you know, hobbyists would put in their basement. It's, it's, it's a very discreet element thing, but it like the garden element of it is trying to find plant material that mimics in scale, say, trees and forested areas. So this is, this is taking the same idea of our, our small, our reduced miniature train here and reducing it ten times smaller.
And are there any buildings associated with that, Howard?
That, no, no. I mean, if, if there's a, you know, if there is a, a, a building, it is this, something which is two or three inches high. It's, it's that kind of, of small model scale.
It's the equivalent of a train folly.
It's very much a train folly, yes. The folly within a folly, to be accurate.
Exactly.
The, the last element here is at the top of this, this screen. This area is currently cleared. This is, this is an area that, that Annie had her pole barn and a couple of small sheds. Used it as her service area. That, that in Astor's day was the original carriage house for the property, horse carriage. They kept their automobiles actually across River Road when those came along. But this, this, this is where all the, the horse carriages were stored for, for the mansion house. We have no idea when that building was demolished. Every, every record that we can find of this, of this area of the property just shows Annie's pole barns. So we'll be removing those pole barns and my client would like to build his own carriage house. We're calling it the carriage house, because my client owns two boats that were previously owned by, by the Astors. He would like to store them in this facility. They're it, it's a real, it's not the kind of boats that you really want to be using much. They're, they have quite a bit of aesthetic value. So he would like to really just preserve them here in, in this particular structure. He's also looking for a possible Astro automobile, or at least a period automobile or, or two or more to be kept in here. And this is, this is really just a storage facility. It's not, it's, it's going to have passive heating and cooling, geothermal, some solar. It probably will not have a heating plant within it. It's, it's really just meant to, to store and to, in a sense, exhibit these particular artifacts.
It's not functionally related to the train?
No, it is not. It's fully separate. It just happens to be within that same area. And we thought, given that this is a previously disturbed section of the property, given it was the carriage house and then Annie's barns, that it's an appropriate place to do such a thing. It is also, as you can see here, it's currently well screened by, by very large spruce trees from the, the core part of the property. It's not something that will be easily seen.
Is it approximately the same footprint as the barns?
It's a little bit larger. It might be fifty percent larger.
Does the barn have foundations, the existing barns?
No, no, they do not.
And will this barn have foundations?
It would have to, to support some of the, the structure for it, but we're not thinking of it as having a basement.
Okay.
Or, or that. As much as we can, it would be mostly slab on grade. We're thinking of it as, as sort of two solid walls on the, on the north and west side. And the, the body of it will be more like a greenhouse. Just a light, light, light steel and glass.
So it's new, it's all new construction?
All new construction. That covers all of the, the improvements that we're planning for, for this application. Happy to, to answer any questions.
Any questions for Howard?
I have a couple of questions, Howard.
Sure.
So in regards to the train, first of all, is there any other renderings that show a visual of the train from a different, from non- aerial view?
Yeah, I, I had planned on showing you some, some, some typical examples. We do have our engineers' drawings for the, for the trestles, as well as the the details for, for laying the bed that's on, on, on grade. So that, that's something we could give to you that would, would certainly help you to visualize what, what this would look like.
Awesome. What is the noise like from a train of this scale?
They're, 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 they're rather small. Now he is looking at both electric and, and a steam powered train. The electric ones make almost no noise, just like an electric car. There's a little bit of noise of the steel wheels, but given that these are, are, you know, are, the track is three quarters of an inch in steel, it's not, that, that's not a particularly loud thing. You know, we have, we have a verbal agreement with, with Annie, our, our neighbor, that we're, you know, we're not going to be blowing horns and you know, making the, that kind of noise for this type of thing. The, the steam engines, they do make a certain amount of noise because they do let off steam. So there's a bit of a whistle with them and there's a little bit of chug sound it makes. But again, because these are so small, it's not like a, you know, a, you know, a full-size train by any stretch of the imagination.
Awesome. The, I have a question about the footprint. Is this the exact or very close footprint to what the original Astro train was, or is this expanded?
This, this is expanded from it a fair amount. If you can still see in this drawing where we have the, the ground house and car barn, there is that, that sits on the exact southern loop of Vincent's original train. And then there's a, a line that goes a bit of an angle to the right from, from where, yeah, that right there. That, and then as it curls up towards the, the river, up to that point where Jim's cursor is, that is more or less the original line of, of Vincent Astor's train. However, Vincent's train then turned to the right again and followed that open meadow line up to the, the pond area. And that Annie was not willing to let us go that far. Since with, you know, all of this is in the easement area. We have to negotiate with, with her to to get the, the rest of this layout. So in order to make this into something worthwhile, we've extended it both east and west from that point to create more interesting loops.
Howard, I'm sorry, I thought you were through.
No, go ahead.
Howard, it might be helpful to members of the, it's Kathy, by the way, in and out of service here. It might be helpful to show the members of the planning board who haven't seen it already, the film of Vincent Astor's train that you guys have. I think it would both answer a lot of questions, even if what your intent is, is not the same, but still in all, I think it would answer a lot of questions.
Yeah, that's a good idea, because that was my next question. What is sort of the general use of it? And I, I do still have one other question, which is that I assume what I can, what I'm visualizing here as being this loop and more of this recreational experience, it's not interconnecting the properties, right? It's just that localized area that we're looking at?
Yes, 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 yes. In our previous applications, this is before we purchased the eleven acres from Annie, we ran that between, this train between the Astor Courts property and Brindlebrook. And in that case, it did connect the properties and, and had much more of a visual impact within the overall estate. As part of the, the, the opportunity of, of purchasing this, purchasing this land, as well as what I described before of learning through the cultural landscape report, Carrie Cullane's studies. You know, putting the train over in this area is both appropriate because Vincent had it there, but it's also off to the side. It's away from the core part of the property. It's away from the historic, the valuable aspect of the property. So in, in that sense, yes, it is, it's, it's intentionally contained over in that, in that northern section of our land.
Great.
Yes, and, and we can certainly get for the, for the next hearing, get that, that video on, as well as the, the PowerPoint presentation that I plan to give to you as, as a number of, of images of Vincent's, you know, Vincent on his train, as well as other precedents that are akin to what we're proposing.
And that, I, that, I'm just making sure. That will also include potentially a rendering of the visual that you guys are trying to apply as well?
Yeah, we don't really have a rendering of it, but we can show you the, the engineers' three-dimensional drawings. They're, they're, they're quite effective at, at showing what the scale of the, the trestles will be.
Perfect.
A question on the new building, the building
A question on the new building, the building that will house the boats. More water?
Yeah, it's going to need some amenities. We are still in the schematic design stage of, of this, um, uh, you know, of, of this, but in order to keep things clean and just general building maintenance, yes, it's going to need some water. We do have a question about whether or not it will have a bathroom. Probably yes, and that's really just, uh, because this is a large estate and, um, and you have a lot of service people, you know, working throughout it, um, having the number of, of toilets accessible to them scattered throughout the property is, is, it's a positive amenity. So it's, you know, it's, it would be a toilet for that kind of purpose.
What are the dimensions of that building?
Uh, it's about, and I think it's about 50 by 75.
Howard, has the, uh, uh, opportunity for bringing a train car to the property gone away?
Uh, yes, only because the, um, the, the entity that owns that particular car is really not willing to even discuss something with us, so.
Other questions for Howard?
Michael, this is Jim. I, I had one or two, it might be more from Mark. Mark, I saw on the, um, the development plan, or what we submitted, uh, we're not including Ferncliff anymore. I assume that's because the approval of the utilities plan that was done was part of that and that's now been removed from the master plan?
That's correct. That's, it, it, the sole purpose for Ferncliff was just for utility.
And then the only other one, and I don't know if you can explain it quickly enough, but it's gone from a four-phase plan to three phases. It didn't look like that, didn't look like that was necessarily specifically because Ferncliff was out. Is there a kind of a quick explanation as for the change from four phases to three phases? Did I read that correctly?
I, I didn't understand the question, Jim.
Well, I, as I say, originally it looked like it was a four-phase, I think it was a four-phase development plan, and now it's three. Is that correct? Did it change or am I, I misread it?
Well, no, there's just, uh, I mean, we, we provided a phasing plan for, uh, you know, for, for all the improvements being, uh, being proposed here.
Right, yeah, no. Yeah, I thought the number changed from four to three phases, but I'll, I'll look into that later, discuss later. I'll, I'll look at it again.
Yeah, yeah, Jim, some of that might be because we did, we did have subsequent applications between our, our last application and this one, and we covered some of that territory, such as the utilities and the service drive. I, I think we, uh, and, and also I think that, that you, you, those of you who saw the, the previous application, you can see that this is less effort than we had in the, in the previous applications. So we don't have as much scope of work to spread, to have a reason to spread it out over four separate, um, phases.
But that's kind of what I thought. I just wanted to.
Any other questions this evening, at least? No?
In the beginning, you were talking about a boathouse restoration. That's a totally separate application that's underway, is that right?
That's completely. That was an approved application, right, Mark?
Yes, it was.
Powerhouse. The powerhouse was approved, but the boathouse.
Right.
Uh, still, it's best, I think part of it is trying to actually get permission to do anything on the Hudson River at this point. It's not all that easy.
I, I've been involved in that, and so originally it was, it was for complete, uh, restoration of, of Astor's boathouse, but that has since evolved to, uh, uh, just, you know, an application to OGS and, uh, New York State DEC for a, uh, a platform to be placed on the fill area on the west side of the tracks. And then, uh, from that fill, uh, there'll, there'll be a platform on that fill area and with a, uh, uh, hinged, uh, gangway to a, to a floating dock, uh, located where, you know, Astor had his bulkhead and where, and, and it was actually where the, uh, original bo- boathouse was, was fa- the foundation of the original boathouse. So, um, all, all New York State DEC is allowing, allowing is a platform and a floating dock, and that's it. Along, uh, application to OGS for, um, actually where that land was filled, uh, was never actually built by, uh, Astor. So he just filled it. And so the application also includes going into OGS for, um, a purchase of that property, uh, along with and included with it, uh, before, there's a, uh, there's a, uh, a, a walkway over the railroad tracks. And so that walkway starts on the east side, almost where the, uh, where the access road is to the powerhouse. Uh, and then there's a, a walkway across above and across the tracks and then a stairway, walkway down into where that filled area is on the west side.
So that's a raised walkway similar to what's in Rhine Cliff?
Yes.
Okay. And you, you said, you said restoration, you used the word restoration of the boathouse, but there is no boathouse left, right?
Right. So that was, and that, so, and then DEC will not allow that to be rebuilt or, or anything built there. So all, all they're allowing is a floating.
And there are no remnants? There are no below water?
Oh, there are. There are remnants there. You can see where, uh, you know, there's still, um, there's still bulkheads there and remnants, remnants of that boathouse are still there, but.
And is DEC requiring you to avoid those with new construction?
They want, uh, the, all, um, all construction needs to stay, uh, uh, above shoreline. You know, uh, lean on land. We, that's the only, only improvement that's allowed.
But you, you, you have not completed your, um, conversations with them? You don't have an approval at this point?
We don't have an approval. It's just, actually, we're in the process of, uh, a resubmission. Resubmission should occur in, in a week or two, um, to, uh, to both, uh, it's DEC, Army Corps, uh, uh, Department of State and, um, and OGS.
And are you running this separate from or simultaneous with or concurrent with your master plan application? How, how do they all come together?
Up for this particular aspect?
Yeah.
Need, uh, the, the work on the west side of the backs, Melody?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it, I guess it's, it's all concurrent.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mark or Howard? Okay. What we thought would be helpful, because we, we have some new members who haven't had a chance to really see the lay of the land, try and set up another opportunity to do a site visit to the property, uh, to basically go over all the different, uh, uh, improvements that are being proposed, see what's there already, and really so you can get a real feel for what, what you're hearing tonight, what, what, what's, what's being depicted to you. I think that's something that we'll have to try and coordinate as a group. I guess we can maybe coordinate it with Mark, maybe the easiest, uh, for us, not so much for him. And, um, what I'd like to do is, uh, continue this public hearing until February 16th at 6:55.
It's scheduling, Michael.
I'm sorry?
It's actually rescheduling it, so they have to re-notice.
Oh, oh, that's right. Thank you, Gretchen. Did you catch that, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. We're scheduling the public hearing for February 16th at 6:55 and, uh, the clerk will assist the applicant in getting the proper noticing out.
Okay. Great. I'll take care of that with Gretchen.
Okay. Mark, how would you like to handle, uh, site visits or site visits?
Well, you know, um, the only thing I can say is now is a great time, you know, besides the cooler temperatures, it's a great time to see the site with no snow on the ground. And I, I just looked at extended forecast. I don't, uh, next week maybe no snow again. So, um, I'm certainly open if, if it wants to be done in groups. Howard and I can certainly coordinate, uh, groups at different times, whatever is appropriate. And also, what, uh, Jim, what is, what's legal on this? I, I forgot. I forgot how we're supposed to do this.
For a site visit?
Yes.
We, we could do site visits. You just can't conduct any discussions of, of it, you know, so planning board members can ask the questions, um, get the lay of the land, things like that, but you can't have any discussion about the project or discussion of thoughts, recommendations, things like that.
Okay.
Otherwise, there's no, I, I do not believe there's any limitation. You can't conduct business, that's all.
Okay, so I, I'm certainly open. I, I mean, next week I'll keep my, well, I, and I don't know what the board, you know, the board refers, if, uh, I'm just suggesting sooner rather than later, because, uh, conditions certainly allow for it now.
Jim, maybe you want to do a doodle poll?
Can do that. I'll work with Mark.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, Michael. This is Jim. I just asked one other quick question. We're going to recirculate, uh, all the information to involved agencies, right? And we'll work with Gretchen on doing that?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to let everyone know we'll do that. It'll just be a recirculation, because we've already done it and already declared, uh, planning board is lead agency and all that.
I, I think it's important, uh, Michael, if you circle back to Charles, because, um, once we recirculate even to Shipoh, it would be nice to have his final report.
Yeah, I, I'm going to drop him an email and, and see how he's getting along with re- reviewing Carrie's revised, uh, CLR.
Okay, good.
So, Melody, were you saying, should we wait until?
No, 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 no. But I, I think, you know, the sooner we can get that back, it will inform other agencies looking at the application. I know I would certainly like to look at her report juxtaposed to the master plan proposal.
Okay. And, and Jim, we're circulating the, you know, the documents, I submit binders and plans. Is that correct?
Yeah, let, let's talk with Gretchen about the best way to do this. Actually, we were just talking today about whether we do paper binders or if it can be digital, since people aren't in offices, but let's, um, let, let's see what we can figure out in terms of distribution, what makes the most sense and.
Yeah, that's fine. And, uh, I'll coordinate that with you and Gretchen. And as I did before, I'll be responsible for all the packaging and, and submission once we decide on how to do it.
We certainly appreciate that, though.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Well, okay, um, this has been most enlightening. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, Jim? I, it's going to crash again. See you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Michael, can I recommend the next thing we do is the Ferncliff Forest, uh, extension?
I was just going to mention, we have a short little item before we get to our two amendments referred to us from the, from the town board. Basically, the approval that we gave for Ferncliff Forest, uh, they, uh, haven't been able to, uh, complete uh, getting a building permit, getting that done, and they have submitted in a timely manner a request. So I have a motion, um, to read to you for that request. Upon timely request by Ferncliff Forest regarding the above referenced site plan previously approved on August 17th, 2020, the planning board hereby grants extension under section 12578 point D point 2 of six calendar months from the expiration date of February 17th, 2020. This extension provides the applicant until August 17th, 2021 to submit a complete application for a building permit or certificate of occupancy from the town of Rhinebeck. Okay. Could I have your motion to approve, please?
But I have a question, Michael. Do we have any understanding of what's causing the delay for them? That was a pretty, pretty straightforward application.
And Michael, I.
I don't know, Melody.
I think that's.
We just, we just received the request. I don't know that anything was accompanying it.
Okay.
So, so, Michael, I think that February 21st should be 2021. That's one of my, uh, new typos. Sorry about that.
Uh, yes.
So we'll correct that in the podcast.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Melanie. Second? All right, I'll say that.
Second, sorry, I was on mute.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay. As you know, the town board is making revisions to the, uh, zoning code particularly in reference to hospitality uses. Uh, one of the, uh, amendments involves definitions of, uh, that refer to hospitality uses specifically to the occupancy of hotels, motels, country ends, uh, uh, not bread and breakfast, which are already, uh, quantified. Traditionally, historically, what the planning board has always done is we've assumed, uh, a room in a hotel motel or country end would be for two people. We've never defined a bedroom. We've never defined a guest room. We've never defined a suite. We haven't had definitions. What we've been basically doing is following the health department, uh, approval procedure for sewage disposal systems, and what they use is the Department of Environmental Conservation flows guidelines. Basically, what those are is for, and this is something that's interesting. For the DBOH, when they're looking to size a septic system, determine how much potable water, things of that sort, they base it on what they call a sleeping unit, which is one bed for two people. And what they consider necessary for that in terms of an SDS is 110 gallons per day. For a hotel, they use the same 110 gallons per day. They'll add 10 gallons per day if there are kitchen facilities that are also involved. So what they use is basically bed count, and they assume a bed will have two people in it, and they base their flows on that. What our definition has, the proposed definitions is using bedroom and defining a bedroom as having two occupants per bedroom. And it also discusses suites being a combination of bedrooms, each of the bedrooms within a suite, to accommodate up to four people. A lodging unit is defined as the actual structures within which you will find bedrooms or suites. So that's, um, it's a different, it's a different term specifically. I know that Jim has been working, uh, with the town board, uh, with, uh, Michael Zerrin, who's an attorney, who's worked for the town before on our comp plan, zoning laws, and other issues.
Is this my call?
Sounds like we did. Jim, I, I think he was about to turn it over to you.
Yeah, so I can, um, I can take this on. So I was hoping to go through if everyone will running after eight o'clock here, um, give me a couple of minutes to, uh, to run through some slides that I put together, um, just to try and help outline what's going on. I think the idea today is to have a discussion about what's going on here. I don't think we need to, um, consider a recommendation or a resolution at this point. Um, I think it's better if we just have a discussion and see kind of where things stand and the input from everybody. My screen? PowerPoint? So I think everyone knows this, but I just kind of wanted to break it down really quickly. It's actually what we're looking at, and I think we need to, to kind of keep in mind, even though they are certainly, you know, in, integrated in, in use, is that we're really looking at two different laws. We're looking at one, uh, proposed local law related to the country and two revisions. And those revisions include looking at the definition of a membership club and what that means, uh, the number of bedrooms that will be permitted and the number of lodging units. And the bedroom and lodging units, as Michael just stated, uh, used to be considered one, um, but they are no longer considered to be one on a, um, finding by the zoning administrator who deemed that a lodging unit is not the same as a, as a, as a bedroom. Then on the other end, uh, we're looking at the definitions that are going in. Our definition for bedroom, our definition for suite, lodging unit, guest room, which would be in a commercial hospitality, and then a definition called commercial hospitality. And all of those definitions run all across the board, uh, in the town of Rhinebeck. They're not specific to country and two. They'd be specific to any use that might refer to those, to those terms. So it could be a country and two, a country and one, hotel motel, or a bed and back breakfast. In addition, the bedroom would actually also apply as a definition to a residential structure like a house. So what I want to do is just kind of, again, quickly go through some of this just to, to lay out really quickly. Country and two changes are specific to, to that special use criteria, special use permit criteria. As I said, the definitions will apply throughout the town, uh, for the most part, with the exception of lodging units, which only, uh, apply to commercial hospitality. Again, they're separate laws, but they work together. And the purpose of. Again, they're separate laws, but they work together. And the purpose of these laws is to better define and detail, you know, what each item or term means. Is there either missing or, or we don't have sufficient detail currently within the code? And I think, you know, not to put words in, in the planning board's mouth, but I think generally speaking, I think we can all agree that we need these definitions and terms and this clarification to move forward. How exactly that moves forward, I think is certainly, you know, what we'll be discussing tonight. But I think it's generally, we'd be generally agree we need these definitions and um, and we definitely need some, some, some additional help and assistance in the code with, with how to look at it, country and two. So with that, um, Michael, you're still here. I don't know. Hear us, Michael?
Yeah, I'm still here. Um, there's.
No, go ahead.
There's the one thing that I, I think that we need to, that I think we wanted to differentiate is between the definition, if it's going to be used for commercial uses uh for occupants per room, for residential uses like a single family home, two residences, uh, two occupants per bedroom. Because if we're going to use four occupants per bedroom, if you want to build a two-bedroom, single-family home, you're going to be required to put in a septic system for a four-bedroom home, what it's currently now. Because the health department's going to say, oh, that would, if by your definition and your law, you have four occupants in that bedroom, they do it on bedroom, on bed count, two occupants per bed, but they're doing it basically on occupants. So they're gonna say, you're gonna have four people in that bedroom. And so I think we want to definitely distinguish between residential and keep it two occupants per bedroom as we have historically. And for commercial uses, because that would be more traditional, you know, up to four people, families, things like that, for commercial uses only, would be the four occupants per bedroom.
Right, and, and the definition does do that. It does separate out, uh, and that's part of the, the purpose of some of those. It separates out the difference between a residential unit and what we're calling commercial hospitality, which is in the, the law you got. Yep, so.
And Jim?
If you want to start with, if you want to start with that element, or just have you kind of run through things, but sure.
Jim, you are much clearer if you face forward as you are now. When you turn away, it's hard to get all of your words.
Sorry, I'm, I'm working off of two screens and I'm, I'll try my best.
Thank you.
Um, so Michael, you know, I can kind of run through things. Um, we can go through them one at a time. Uh, that's kind of, you know, the overview that I wanted to make sure we're aware of, that, you know, again, I know these mixed together, but they are two very different elements. Michael, you brought up the number of people per, per bedroom. Certainly start there if you want to. Um.
Well, I, I think that I just want to distinguish between the number of people in a bedroom for commercial hospitality use and the number of people in a bedroom for, you know, a single-family dwelling for a residential use.
Right, and the definition does do that. Um, it's drafted to do that, to say that it will be two, considered to be two people per bedroom in a residential and, and four people per bedroom in a commercial hospitality or a commercial use.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that works well. And I think the other thing we were thinking is, would it be even easier if we just said four people, a bedroom, a commercial, two people in a bedroom residential? Uh, and then just base occupancy of, say, a commercial hospitality, uh, like a hotel motel country end, on the number of occupants permitted, as opposed to the number of bedrooms. Just a thought.
You could also do both, of course. You, you can have a maximum number of bedrooms, and you can also have a maximum number of overnight guests in any twenty-four hour period. That's what the B and B does, by the way.
That's right. I guess the question is, does everyone understand why we need these definitions? We don't have them currently. And we're, you know, before us right now, we do have two fairly significant hospitality applications. And we really do need to be able to quantify and be very specific, because so much of the uh conditions that we place on an application and the requirements such as parking, uh, water use, sewage disposal system, uh, things of that sort, traffic, all these things are basically based upon, you know, human beings coming and going, using these facilities. So we do need to be able to nail it down. And the other permitting agencies, like the Department of Transportation, DEC, the Health Department, they all require these too, in doing their permitting, which is also necessary for these projects to go forward. So that's, that's why it's so important that we get these definitions down, so that we really know we can quantify what's being proposed to us as we go forward. That's about all I have to say, Jim.
Michael, do we take into account the size of property into any of this? Um, when I'm just thinking about the amount of occupants?
That, basically, when they were doing, when the comp plan was being developed in the zoning law, they did place acreage, uh, minimum acreages on different uses for a hotel, a motel, a country and one, a country and two, um, bed and breakfast, a convention centers, they had those as well. So that has also been considered uh as one of the aspects, and also for the larger uh type of occupants, things like a country and two or a hotel, access to a county or a state road, as opposed to just a town road, which usually is not designed to take that level of commuter traffic or use traffic. So those things have all been taken into account. I think as we're raising, proposing to raise density, uh, I think that's another thing we have to take into account again to look at. If you're raising density, um, does it, does it still meet same uh level of use of roads, park, all those different things that were considered when the zoning law was originally written? Or do we need to take a harder look at raising density to see whether or not the impacts on those different facilities might be something that would be undesirable? Uh, in many places, as uses get greater, you need left-hand turn lanes. As it really gets greater, you get stoplights. You know, how many stoplights, you know, in the town of Rhinebeck are desirable until you suddenly get to the point where you're sort of getting a situation of gridlock? So, yeah, that's, number of acres, yes, that's important. Part of the decision there for the acreage was to try and preserve the open space in the HP twenty and the RA ten districts. Um, that was part of the discussion along those lines.
The other thing, Michael, to go back to the comprehensive plan and some of the things that were driving it when it was developed was uh the desire on the part of the town to protect to the greatest extent possible the commercial center of the village. So, you know, right now you have um some hotels and, and other accommodations in the village. And I don't know what the balance is, but as you, as you develop accommodations in the town, do they become, um, do they, do they drown out the village? So, you know, you can't really pin that down, but the density of development in the town may or may not affect the uh ability or the survivability of, of accommodations in the village. So, I mean, these are just indefinable, but factors that would come into play in terms of how large you would allow country ends to get in the town in terms of competition with village, um, village businesses. Right, and it's more than merely accommodations, because there are restaurants and spas and, you know, a small shop and other, other things in a country in two. It's a large and complex operation. And in its own way, it's kind of like a, a gated village for, for people who don't live here, for, for people who are visiting. So will it not only deprive, I mean, if it's too large, will it not only deprive the village of accommodations, will it deprive restaurants? Well, you know, not all country ends that might come into the community would have all of those things in them. But it, it's something along the lines of what has happened, unfortunately, in some places where, you know, as strip malls, and I'm not meaning to equate them, but as strip malls develop in the perimeter of a community, they, they, you know, diminish the ability of stores and storefronts in the community survive. So, you know, I mean, just talking in general about country ends, I mean, because really here, we're not talking specifically about any application. We're just talking in general. I'm saying, though, that the um, the, the definition of a country and two and the density that has been in the zoning law was something that people had in mind when the comprehensive plan was being drafted. And so it was going to have a hundred lodging units, which at the time were considered equivalent to bedrooms with two people. And there's a difference, I believe, in the impact on the village between, let's say, two hundred and twenty guests and maybe five hundred guests. That, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, so.
I have a question about something that was just said, what, as, as far as the country end, is it that the town, the people that live in town wouldn't have access to this, to be able to go to the restaurants or the shops that are there?
Well, that's gonna depend on the individual application.
Yeah.
Well, well, the, the, the way that the country into proposed local law has been drafted, it does actually essentially mandate public access to certain facilities. Uh, and, and in the discussions that I, I have heard, public, the public will have access to it. This is not a, a member-only, um, the one that is in front of us is not a member-only proposed um, application. Uh, and the way that the, the code proposed would not allow that. It's, it's proposed that it would have to have public amenities. Uh, the public would have to be allowed to get a membership uh as a membership club, which is another part of this law that's being drafted.
Right.
And, and all those things have been put into the code. The important thing to remember, I mean, I guess one thing to remember is the planning board has a lot of discretion in how this goes forward. I know we like to have, but, you know, it's good if we have it defined, so that we know what we have to work with and developers do. But the planning board still has discretion. And so, you know, certainly, I have a question about, you know, the increase in, in potential units for a country into um, as a concern. But the maximum permitted does not necessarily mean that everyone's entitled to that maximum. There are discussions about density, intensity, use, all of which fall to the planning board um, and your discretion of, of what you're doing, don't want to do, like in playing to traffic. Um, you know, the planning board does have the right to deny an application. If they don't feel that it's a problem. You know, first.
Have an idea of how many open spaces, um, you know, I, I guess there's a, there's a comment of preserving the village and um, the facilities within the village being dining and/or accommodations within the village. Do we, do we, have we been able to kind of identify how many of these country ends could potentially happen? Um, because there's also the reality that it's, you know, not the planning board's position of what people want. Um, if the facilities within the village are checking all the boxes, then they should have no concern. Um, if the facilities in the town are better or not better. Um, I, I don't know where the planning board gets involved in that.
So I've done additional work and research on this for the uh, for the EAF forum. It has to be done with these zoning code proposed local laws. That, that has not been released. It's, it's still in draft form. I'm working with the, the attorney on that. Um, but based on my, what's currently permitted, in theory, the town could have five country and twos developed in town within the RA ten that exists now, based on the existing large lots that are out there.
How many, Jim? Again, you're muffled. I can't understand. How many?
Based on my, based on my assessment, assuming everything else fell into place, I believe there could be five. Uh, with, with the current large lots that are there now, not by talking about any lot consolidation, just using existing large lots now that acres or more. And the main reason, you know, is, is because the RA ten is a large zoning district, um, but it also is restricted because you have to have access to a state route. Um, so in this case, the only ones that could exist have to have access to Route nine. So the only land that's available is, is the, the country into that, that grassmere that's already been approved, and that we obviously have an application before, in front of us now. And there's a large amount of land up on Route nine north of the village that conceivably has these as well. So my, my audition of it looks to be five potential country and twos, if that were to happen. I mean, like I say, it's, it's, I don't think it's likely, and, you know, everything else would have to fall into place, obviously.
Um, i- i- in regards to, so I, I totally get, like, there's a fine line between where we hurt our town versus help our town, and we have to really consider that. There's also, though, the, the argument to be made that, like, there's an extreme deficit in lodging opportunities in our town and in many surrounding areas. And creating something that creates a really wonderful and beautiful experience for visitors in, in many ways helps our town and our economy, and hopefully local businesses, if done right. And so, I mean, like, going back to these definitions, I, I, obviously, we have to create, um, we have to adapt, you know, the number of people that can stay in any given room, given other applications that may come in the future. Um, you know, but it, it can go both ways. And so I think there's, there's definitely still benefit to people coming to visit, you know, and staying here.
I, I think that's absolutely true, and I think that was one of the ideas behind the country and two. Both to maintain the open space of those large, that's why they zoned it up like that. But at the same time, to create somewhat unique hospitality opportunities for visitors to the town of Rhinebeck. I don't think there's any, any question about that. But what we're trying, I think, to do, and I think we need to do so that we can do what we need to do, is get the definitions which apply um to the hospitality uses in the town to the point where there's no longer discussion or wondering about, well, what do these mean? We spend, you know, I think, an inordinate amount of time going to the zoning enforcement officer, asking for determinations on the definition of terms, which I think suggests that, you know, the town zoning law needs to be amended, so that, you know, specific definitions are given for those terms, which keep cropping up, and we have things coming before us, which is basically why we have these definitions here now. This has come up on a number of things over the last five years. And uh, basically, we should be defining them, so both applicants, the planning board, and the people of the town understand exactly what these terms are and what they can entail for different uses, different applications that are coming before us. But does anyone have a problem, just, just specifically dealing with the definitions of bedroom, suite, lodging unit, guest room? Does anyone have a, a problem with what's being proposed for occupants for a commercial institution, two in a residential type of a use?
Um, Michael, did you recommend that the definition of bedroom be separated for residential use and hospitality use? So there'd be two separate definitions?
Yeah.
I, I think that would be helpful.
Michael, you want two definitions? Bedroom, commercial, residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Just as we have in the, in the, in the definitions, certain uses of the zoning law, we have for-profit uses and we have not-for-profit uses. It's the same thing. Um, I specifically think it's going to create a great deal of heartache for residential uses if people are suddenly told, when they want to build a house, two or three bedrooms, which they thought was going to be four to six occupants, they're going to be basically asked by the health department, which says the town of Rhinebeck considers a bedroom for four occupants. Therefore, you need to make uh your sewage disposal system, a number of laterals for something that's twice as big as what the homeowner with the three bedrooms, hoping it was just two people per bedroom, had intended. And I think it's a very simple thing to do, and I think it, I don't see any problem with it.
No, no, as, as a matter of, I mean, the, the definition as, as it is now is one definition of bedroom, but it does at the end define how many people are in a room for a residential use versus a commercial hospitality. So it's, it's one definition, but it does break out those two elements.
Okay.
If you wanted to.
That, I must have missed that, Jim. If that's in there, that's fine. That's fine. Because it's also the other problem we've been having very often, and very often with residential uses, is people proposing to put in dens, libraries, TV rooms, things like that, which then, of course, turn into a bedroom as soon as they get the CO.
I still have a concern with having one definition for bedroom and then talking about the two different situations in the same definition. For example, the current, the proposed definition for bedroom states only that they quote, "may have access to a bathroom." Well, certainly in a hospitality use, a bedroom must have, I would think, access to a bathroom. I mean, there, there are little things like that. If you read the definition carefully, it's, creates an ambiguity which to me seems unnecessary.
Let me just look real quick.
Well, clearly a bedroom would have access to a bathroom. I, I see what you're saying. Is perhaps the intent there, Jim, would have uh an attached bathroom as opposed to, you know, a bathroom on one floor with three bedrooms, something like that?
Right, right, exactly. If we, if we said that a ba- a bedroom had to have access to a bathroom, then that could be considered, and this was some of the discussion we had, that every, essentially every bedroom would have to be, have an en suite, which is not the intent here. The intent is just to say, you know, it may have access to a bathroom. It doesn't have to. So that, as we go back to what you said before, Michael, if someone comes in with a den that's got lots of windows. that's got lots of windows and a closet, you know, and it's off to the side, it, it's a bedroom, but you know, it's not being put as one on the plans. We want the ability to say, no, that is a, that is a bedroom, um, and to be able to classify it as such. So it may or may not have access to a bathroom. Um, but again, this, that's, that's why it says may.
Again, hospitality situation, do you want to have bedrooms that share bathrooms down the hall?
Well, honestly, I know that would really be up to whoever's developing it, but I, I do know there are B and Bs that have some of that, uh, in places. So again, it's really, the intent here was not to drive what they have to do in terms of, of that kind of access. It would be up to that applicant. Certainly if the planning board wanted to say they don't understand, it doesn't make sense, you certainly can. Um, but we didn't want to require it either. So the only other option is to kind of remove it and then you don't discuss it at all. Uh, we're, again, trying, I think, to, to, to deal with some of the issues we've had. Um, of, of making sure that we can classify things as a bedroom if need be, both for the purposes of what the planning board does and the department of health to make sure we're being consistent with what they're going to say.
Also, if it's a lot, if it's a lodging unit that has two bedrooms, it, it may have a shared bathroom in that scenario.
It could.
Cause then it's more, you know, operating as one unit with two rooms.
Exactly. And from a residential standpoint, it's not unusual to have a couple of bedrooms on the second floor and you have one bathroom, which is shared by the family.
I, I think there's no, in my personal feeling, there's no doubt that residential and commercial can have to be different because you're absolutely right. It would just not fly for new builds to have. People have to double the size of their septic. Um, but at the same time, it seems, it seems very reasonable, given, you know, hotel rooms all, all over the world. You know, you would assume that they can occupy up to four guests and especially when you're catering to family friendly environments. I mean, if you could only have two people per room, you really limit the, the volume of families that can, that can travel.
I, I think that was the thinking, you know, to encourage, to encourage families, you know.
Right.
For the commercial uses before occupants per bedroom.
Is there anything particular in this that would change, uh, the residential impact?
No, it's, it's, it's not. Sorry, go ahead, Michael.
I would say the only thing that would impact it is if it wasn't clearly understood that for residential, when you're building a house, residential bedroom would have two occupants so that the health department doesn't assign the same size septic system as they would for a commercial application in which a bedroom could have up to four occupants.
So Michael, I apologize. You, you are correct. It doesn't separate out residential in the current definition. I was thinking of a, a revision I typed up. But the current definition does say for the purposes of establishing density for a commercial hospitality, it is four. It's actually silent to what happens with residential, um, which technically would make it then default back. But I, I do think, you know, we do need to put in something in there that specifically says, you know, for residential, it would be considered two. Um, yeah. So, so the current definition doesn't, it, it doesn't call out four for residential. It's silent on it, but we can, I think we can clarify that a little more. So.
I think that would be very helpful. Any more thoughts on the, on the definitions themselves, recognizing these are going to apply to all, uh, with the exception of bed and breakfasts, which state exactly how many occupants can be in a B and B at any given time. Uh, this, these definitions will apply to all hospitality uses in the town, country ends, hotels, motels. Uh, I think we had something about convention centers, uh, where people would perhaps be, have boarding for conventions, things like that. They would all have the four occupants per bedroom, uh, for commercial uses. Is everyone comfortable with this?
Yeah. Can the public talk at this or no?
Yes, there will definitely be, um, public hearings on this. Yeah, the planning, the town board definitely has to hold public hearings on this.
Okay. Yeah. My concern is a, a resident is more now that they're separating lodging unit from bedroom. The thought of something becoming a country in and taking a building or two and creating a hundred and ten bedrooms is a lot different than somebody walking onto a piece of property and building a hundred and ten buildings.
That's very true.
So if you take a, a piece of property that's two hundred and fifty acres and the idea is to keep it rural and agricultural and you suddenly build a hundred and ten buildings, you've now dropped it down to R two. Whereas if, if I on a, in an R five piece of property were to come in and say, hey, can I build another house? I would be denied. So that's, that's, uh, that's one concern is what sort of a precedent does it set? Um, can anybody just come along and, you know, start building a hundred and ten units everywhere?
No, they can't. There, there are a good many reasons why there would be a great deal of review before such a thing could happen. I think.
Sorry, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I, Michael, I'm sorry. I don't know who made that comment.
I'm sorry. It's Kirsten Green.
Are, are we taking public comment at this meeting?
We, we weren't intending to.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
And, and I think, um, what Jim said earlier, and I think it's something we need to keep in mind. Every decision made by the planning board is a discretionary decision. The zoning law lays out what the maximums permitted are, but the planning board is not obligated to approve the maximum. The planning board's required to really assess these projects. Uh, and you've seen the level of review that we do do to ascertain to the best of our ability, what we feel is an appropriate density and intensity of use for a specific property for an application. And then it is our decision as to what that density and intensity of use will be. It's, that's basically the, uh, reason why I believe the responsibilities of the planning board is so important to the future of the community. What we do really does determine what the community is going to look like because it's not something that can then just simply be turned around and, and withdrawn. Once it's built, it's built. So, but we, our decisions are discretionary. We're not required by law to give the maximum of, of anything to anyone for any reason.
Can I ask a, just a quick question? If we have a lodging unit with, let's say, two bedrooms and a living quarter with a, with a pullout couch, for example, do we also then, and maybe Edna said this, so I apologize if I missed it, do we also then have a maximum occupancy per lodging unit based on the number of bedrooms? Like if it's two bedrooms, they would get eight people. And if one's sleeping in a pullout couch, then it doesn't matter because it's two bedrooms. So it's eight people. Does it, does it line up like that based on the number of bedrooms?
No, basically a, a lodging unit could have any number of bedrooms. There's no limit to how many bedrooms could be in a lodging unit. Although the way they, the current definition for country into, it just gives the maximum number of lodging units, which is one hundred and a bonus of ten, if you're basically doing it with a adaptive reuse of an historic structure, which is what's been so confusing. The assumption all along had been that lodging unit was a bedroom and that we've always used traditionally two occupants per bedroom. It turns out these things have never been dis- been, uh, defined. And therefore the fact that we've been using it historically, yes, that's precedent. But I don't think precedent alone is necessarily what you want to do if you have to defend the decisions you make. And so for the sake of both the planning board, for applicants, for all people concerned, that's what we're trying to get these definitions, uh, made very specific right now. So everyone knows exactly what a bedroom is and what a suite is and what a lodging unit, which is a structure containing X number of bedrooms.
Right. So in other words, the maximum occupancy of any lodging unit is based on however many bedrooms it has. Is that right? That's how they line up.
And I don't, and I don't think the intent was if you had a, you know, sort of a living room area between a couple of bedrooms, that two pullout couches would then entitle you to two more guests.
Right. No, it wouldn't. It would just be the maximum occupancy based on the bedrooms that are in that lodging unit.
Yes, correct.
Right. So, so, so what I have up here on the screen is actually the zoning administrator's finding, um, from an appeal that was put into her from, from Rhinebeck Villas, um, where she did say that addition of sleeper sofas would, um, end up creating an additional guest room. So that, that's how it is written in law right now. And, and the other thing, you know, I did want to put out there is that, uh, when it comes to the country into lodging unit and bedroom, uh, there's also been a finding by the zoning administrator on that that actually has separated out the lodging unit from a guest room, uh, in her determination. So right now where the code says there's a hundred and ten lodging units that are permitted, that does not necessarily directly correlate to the number of bedrooms that are permitted based on her finding. Um, my understanding right now is the number of bedrooms is undefined for country and two, based on the finding. Um, so that's another reason why we need to, to move this forward. Um, that's, and I know that's, that's where, that's where we are. Um, and that's part of what we're looking at right now. So my, my read on what can happen on a country and two right now, and this is my read, obviously, you know, if someone were to call me on it, we need to get a legal advice, um, and finding on it. But my read is that anything that can be done on a country and two right now is, is pretty much strictly based on the square feet of gross floor area that can be built on a country and two, whether that's, you know, for bedrooms and accommodation uses or, or other uses on a country and two. Um, because there is no strict definition of a bedroom uh, based on that finding, which isn't to say, I guess someone couldn't necessarily challenge that too.
You're saying, certainly. As, as the situation currently exists, not as is being proposed.
As it exists, as it exists right now, right? There, there, there is, there's no direct correlation based on her finding of a, of a lodging unit being a bedroom. And since there's no definition of the number of bedrooms permitted in a country and two, there's no regulation. The only regulation I can see right now is effectively that the country into is running almost as a, as a floor area ratio. You can do a certain amount of floor area to the amount of land that's there, uh, based on the uses that are permitted, which are, you know, accommodations and then the non-accommodation uses that are permitted, you know, within the country and two right now.
Right.
So these, so these, 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 you know, these two local laws are intended to build on what, you know, Michelle has done, clarify some of these things and, and add in some, some desperately needed, you know, definitions, obviously.
May I ask about what the intent is in the use of lodging unit in a country into in the proposed language? It, it looks like the possibility of a bonus for historical restoration is given to lodging unit. Is that the intention or was that just something that slipped by? Why would you do it that way rather than increase the number of bedrooms as a bonus?
I, I can't speak to the number of bedrooms, um, that are currently proposed. I don't believe I was in on those final discussions. Um, but in terms of the lodging units, when it did get broken out, um, and, and I believe the discussion was that we weren't going to do the bonus there. I believe there is still a lot of value, um, in, in permitting an applicant to be able to get a bonus for preserving something by being able to build additional residential structures that would house kind of separate bedrooms. When you think about a country into use and the intent behind it, um, the idea of a country into use housing all of the bedrooms in just a couple of units versus maybe some more residential structures, I think is, is kind of appealing to the developer. Um, you know, it provides the ability for them to separate out, you know, the, uh, the people who are visiting. So they get that, that small cabin feel that they want, not necessarily the feel of going into a hotel with a common hallway or something to that effect. Um, so I, I do believe there is still a, a bonus there for that, you know, for that to take place, um, you know, if, if they were to utilize that.
But originally, my understanding is since lodging unit equated bedroom and everybody's mine, the bonus was to bedrooms. So now it will change.
Uh, I think it was both, but yeah, it, it will change because the lodging unit is now considered to be a structure that an accommodation, like a bedroom would be located in and the bedroom is separate. Yes.
So is the lodging unit definition just in there, is still in there just for the bonus? Because shouldn't it just all be based off of bedrooms?
Well, that, well, not, I mean, not necessarily. I mean, if you take the number we have now, uh, in the proposed local law of a hundred and fifty bedrooms and we didn't have a limit on the number of structures that it could go into, then conceivably you could have a hundred and fifty structures housing a hundred and fifty bedrooms. So the idea here is that those hundred and fifty bedrooms need to go into a hundred and ten units by right or a hundred and twenty-one, I believe it would be with the bonus. So you're, you're taking those hundred and fifty units and, and making some of those, you know, double up as two bedrooms per unit. Um, you know, the historic house on, on the Grasmere site, which is the only one that's approved, was, was proposing a number of bedrooms within that old historic house, things like that. So in this case, you know, the number of bedrooms have to be consolidated down into a smaller number of structures.
Doctor, thank you.
And where did the one hundred and fifty come from, Jim, versus?
I don't believe I was involved in the discussion on the final decision on that, Edna.
Who was?
I, I, we can certainly put that up as a question to the town board, which I think is kind of what I was hearing in, in the write-ups that we had received. If, you know, if you'd like to ask the question, I think that's one that we can certainly ask. What is the basis of the hundred and fifty units, uh, the hundred and fifty bedrooms? I'm sorry.
Is anyone else wondering about that question?
Well, yeah.
It's a valid question to ask.
I'm curious, you know, how, what, what caused that thought? Who thought it?
I think we all share an interest in it because we're being asked to give a recommendation on these amendments, which just doesn't, are going to basically oversee the development of different projects in the town. And I think we want to know what the basis of these decisions are so that we can make an intelligent or an informed recommendation. Right now, if we don't know why the numbers are set at this, uh, what study was done, what are the impact of raising it, whatever? I don't think we can make an informed decision. So yes, I think we all want to know why it's been set at a hundred and fifty.
I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that they keep, they have to keep some relationship and number between lodging units and bedrooms, right? But so my guess is that, uh, uh, the bedroom count would be marginally higher than the lodging units, not by very much. So my gut is probably somewhere around that relationship makes sense, but it would be interesting to see how they got to it.
Well, it's what, fifty percent increase?
Um, well, it's forty units on a hundred and ten maximum if you do a bonus. Yeah. So not, not quite, but yeah, pretty close. You know, and the, and the other thing, you know, to keep in mind, again, if we are on the country to, uh, discussion right now is that um, there is the, you know, there is the ability, you know, on two hundred and fifty acres to, to build the better part of half a million square feet of gross floor area. So I, I know we're focused on the forty bedrooms and I absolutely think we, you know, we can ask the question of, you know, why did it go up to a hundred and fifty bedrooms? Um, but there is a potential for a lot of other potential uses to come on to that site. Um, that would not be, you know, accommodations, whether they be, you know, large, larger spas or other restaurants or other, you know, uses that are permitted within the country and two. And the uses aren't, aren't proposed to change by any of these laws. They're going to stay the same as they are today, as is the, uh, square foot of gross floor area. Um, but you know, something to keep in mind, I think with the country and two, as I was, you know, developing this and thinking about the meeting tonight is that there's a balance that needs to be, to be reviewed and considered here, um, when, when we're moving forward on all of this. And um, yes, forty units is definitely an increase, but, uh, five hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred square feet of gross floor area on a two hundred and fifty acre site, I think is approximately two hundred thousand square feet more than was proposed in the approved um, country into now. So it's, it's a lot of square feet. And so if we put forty bedrooms in, uh, additional bedrooms, there's still a lot of potential gross floor area for other uses that come in that also have, you know, an associated intensity with them, uh, and those are all permitted today. So it's, it's, it's definitely a balancing act. I think we absolutely can ask, you know, why the extra bedrooms? Uh, but just keep in mind as we move forward that it is, there, there's a lot of potential on, on a, on a country and two site.
Are you suggesting it should be further limited?
Not necessarily. I, I haven't gone down that, that avenue. I'm, all I'm suggesting is that there's a lot that can happen on a country into site by right, right now in the code. It's not just about the accommodations. I think, you know, other uses like a restaurant with people coming in and out and spas and other things all have associated impacts with them as well. Of course, those aren't changing. So that, you know, we're not discussing those. But, um, but again, that's, that's part of the balancing acts that, you know, the planning board would need to do. On, on site, during site plan. And, and just quickly to go back to Melody's comment, when we're talking about, you know, viability of the existing businesses in the village and things like that. The planning board has the ability in the code and, and did ask for a, um, for a economic analysis to be done, um, of the proposal that's before us now to assess what's, what they're proposing and what exists in the village. And I know the, the current applicant was looking into, you know, getting a, a professional on board to do an economic analysis to see what the needs are and, and things like that. So during site plan, you have the ability to ask for that. Um, that analysis to be done, and that has been done, uh, for the current iteration.
And, and just to clarify, so people don't misunderstand, the economic analysis would also look at if something like this were built out, what the potential was for new employment um, and other drivers of economic development in the community. So it isn't, it isn't just looking at it from one perspective. As someone pointed out earlier, there are potential downsides and there are potential upsides. If something were built out to the scale that has been discussed, I would assume that that would mean new jobs and economic development in the community on one side. So in asking for an economic analysis, we're not just asking for it to show one side or the other. We're asking for them to reveal in that analysis all of the economic drivers that would. All of the economic drivers that would impact the town and the village. Pro and con.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, Mel. That's a good follow-up. And, and I do believe that the proposal for the Grasmere site right now is between 150 and 200 employees, if I remember correctly.
But that gets that we were sort of digressing from.
Yes.
The just in, in front of us, but just to. Point of what we would look for in economic analysis.
It, 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 it kind of brings us back to, you know, and this, it's tough, but it brings us back to the, the discussion we had at the point we made that, you know, the planning board has a lot of discretion in this and has a lot of ability to ask for. The backup and the data to, to show that what's being proposed makes sense and fits within the context of the town. Um, and even the region and, and that's, you know, I think where we're certainly headed, but these. These local laws, regardless of whatever form they eventually take, are intended to help provide a little more guidance for some of the specifics and the details.
And that, that environmental impact study was done already or it hasn't been done yet?
It's not been done. Okay. It's not, it's not an environmental impact. It's an.
Sorry, economic. That's what I meant. Sorry.
But, but, but there were environmental studies done as well. Lots of those.
Um, Jim, if you're going to ask the question, uh, where did the 150 bedrooms come from? Could there be a second question, which would be? What whoever came up with this 150 bedrooms, what total number? Of people were envisioned at in any 24 hour period. In other words, with. A maximum of four people per bedroom. Was there some kind of a guess about, well, only, you know, 10% of those bedrooms will actually have four people. So we really only have, you know, this many people at one time. Was there some kind of process of thought like that? Is there a desired maximum number of people?
I'll, I'll have to look into that. That is a very good question. Um, and that also comes back to the question about occupancy and that you wouldn't expect necessarily that, you know. A hotel, a motel, a country in one or two would be at 100% occupancy, 365 days a year. Certainly, when you've got stuff going on at the fairgrounds, I would expect they're going to be booked solid and on nice weekends in the summer and other events, you know, they'll be booked solid. But. Is it every single day all year long? Probably not. But, you know, there are numbers like that, that I think they can produce that I think would come out of that economic analysis. Um, stating what they think their percentages are, and I'm sure they know. Um, you know, what those numbers are. When they go and look at. Where to site buildings and projects like this, they typically know what their estimated occupancy rates are and what the rates are going to be. They can charge and things like that. Uh, so we can.
Oh, yeah. I think, I think the rates they can charge in the audience. Um, you know, that's something that the developer or the project applicant has to work out. I wouldn't necessarily agree. That people who are going to the fairgrounds are going to be going to an upscale country in.
Well, okay.
So I mean, you know, I mean, I, there's room for accommodations in any community. Um, I think that need to span a number of price points.
Yeah, certainly. I guess my main point was, I don't, I don't think we'd expect them to be full 365 days a year. So a percent occupancy is going to be some percentage lower than that.
Well, I would, I would assume that the same would apply to any of these country ends. It applies to a lot of the accommodations in town.
Absolutely.
That they, they're seasonal. You know, we all know that the restaurants and accommodations drop off in the winter. So I wouldn't think unless. Unless you were developing something along the lines of a mohawk. Where you were embedding into your general operations. Um, you know, seasonal activities to draw people. I mean, that would be the smart way to go if I were the developer. Um, you know, programmatically building that, but, um. Anyway, those things really are not part of our review.
Oh, they're, they're definitely part of the site plan review, but it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
But not in terms of definitions.
No. That's right.
So the intent, Jim, is that we're going to pick this up at the next meeting? Is that correct?
I, I believe so. Yeah. I think tonight was good to, to get the discussion going. We haven't had a discussion as a group, um, about these definitions, make sure that everyone can kind of, you know. Voice their, their thoughts or concerns. Um.
Can I offer that, that, um, if people following this discussion, because this is, it's new to all of us. I mean, some of us have been involved a little bit, but. It's an extremely big topic and an extremely important one. So maybe post this meeting, anyone who wants to forward other comments and questions to you. They, they should really feel free to do so.
Oh, absolutely. At any time, you know, and then how this, you know, goes back and forth between this discussion and. No recommendations, the town board would be made at a planning board meeting. But sure, if you have any questions, by all means, ask me, let me know.
Well, I have questions on the country into. Um, amendment, are we done talking for the night or are additional questions welcome?
Yes. Yes, they are.
I would, I just would like some clarity on certain issues. Um. When we're talking about a private hospitality membership club, is it agreed that a definition should be in the zoning law? That was recommended by Michael and by me.
What we do have currently in the zoning law is nonprofit membership club. And clearly, I think what's being proposed for this would be a for-profit membership club. And it might be helpful to have that. I, I mean, I think it'd be helpful for us as we're trying to assess, uh, the different accessory uses that may be proposed for a country and to. To understand exactly what that is, since it is mentioned here in the, uh, in the, uh, part A of, part one, I should say, of the country into special use permit description.
So. You know, really, really quickly with that one, I, I can certainly bring that forward if, if that's what the planning board would like, and we can certainly define that. In, in this context, though, I, I do believe it is a little different. The, the private hospitality membership club is the way it's been written. It, you know, where it says by virtue of rewards club or buy-in really is, is being viewed as an operation on the site, not as a, a land use itself. Um, the uses that can be done on the country into site, you know, assuming that we require. Public access, for instance, it doesn't require a membership club to be done. It's, it's not a use, um, per se. It's more of the operation of, of what's going on on the site. Based on the way that it's, it's written. Um, you can't have a land use of a rewards club or a buy-in. Um, so that, that is the intent behind it, which isn't to say we can't define that. Um, but it's not, it's not written or intended to be done as a use the way the other nonprofit, um, membership club was. It's, it's meant to be an operational. Element.
Right, but it could still benefit from a definition. I think you're making an argument that it shouldn't be on the use table, and I think I agree with you.
Yep, yeah.
You certainly could have a definition. I have another question on this issue. The idea that facilities and services are to be available to the general public. Is the intention that every single facility and surface, uh, service must be available, or is it only? Um, accommodation facilities and food and beverage services?
By, by definition, if everything's available, isn't that no longer a membership?
No, because there could be different pricing.
Edna, I think under, again, under country and under section one. The provision of hiking trails that provide opportunities for public use shall be incorporated into the overall plan for the country and to, to the greatest extent practicable. And that's the only thing referenced as being available for public use.
No, I'm saying in the proposed definition, it says, it says that. Um, these private hospitality membership clubs are permitted so long as. I think it says, uh, accommodations and food and beverage services are will be available to the general public. I'm simply trying to get clarity about the intention here. Is the intention that all of the facilities and services? In the country and two must be available to the general public, or is it just accommodation facilities and food and beverage services?
Let me just zoom in here.
Good. That's a good question, Edna. I, I missed that.
A, as it's written right now, all lodging accommodation and various restaurant food or beverage services need to be available for public use, which means by my read. And what I believe is, is the case in this, that. All of the, all lodging accommodations have to be available to the public, but not necessarily every restaurant food or beverage service being provided on the site. And that's where the differentiation thing, I think, comes in between what's available to the public and what may be available to a member.
Right.
Not available to the public.
But you think various means some?
Yes, because we, we, it specifically says all lodging and various restaurant food and beverage service, not all.
I, I think I would, if I were you, I would check to make sure that that is true, the intention of the town board, because I don't think it's clear.
Well, we can ask for clarification.
Meant that all of the restaurant food and beverage services.
I, I don't believe that was the intent, but I can certainly follow up with a question and ask.
Okay, because i- if it's only some of them, then you could, there are ways to make that clearer.
Well, they could just say some.
Yeah, exactly.
They could just change various to some, right? All lodging accommodations and some restaurant food beverage.
Then would the commonly incidental recreation oriented uses not be available to the general public? Since they're not accommodation or restaurant food or beverage services.
That was my question.
So that, that part of the code has not changed. Um, nothing, nothing up until, um. You know, the extended vacation recreation oriented uses, that, that's all stayed the same. We were going in and, and looking, focusing specifically on. The private hospitality membership clubs, but it does, we do still have the sentence, the provision of hiking trails which provide opportunities for public use shall be incorporated into the overall plan. Um, the, the other elements.
Only to the greatest extent practicable.
Right.
And it doesn't reference spa, horseback riding.
Well, it does up above. It, it does at the beginning.
Not for the general public.
No.
Not for the general public.
No, it, we didn't, we didn't change that and, and, um, I, I think that was, I don't know if it was intentional, but we, we, we were only focused on. The, uh, hospitality membership clubs and, and further defining what that was, because that was the, that was the concern when we first started looking country into actually was just that. That element of this. So that, that's the same as it's always been. Um, again, I think that's something that comes down to the discretion of, you know, discussions with the planning board. But if you want to clarify that further, since we're looking at revising this, and certainly we can bring that question forward and. Or request that.
Certainly it should be clarified, because if it's not clarified, it's likely to create possibly, uh. Discussions and rather a long, long review process. If, say, an applicant disagrees that they don't want such spa, swimming, things of that sort to be available to the general public, but only to their members.
Well, this is only establishing in that section about subject to lodging and various restaurant or however we define that. That is the minimum, right? I mean, at our discretion, you could ask them to open up other uses. As part of the discussion with the planning board, could you not?
Absolutely.
But it may be the intention of the town board that a wide, the widest array of facilities and services must be available to the general. I just want to make sure that we know what their intention is.
I think that warrants more clarification.
Yeah, I, I can ask for clarification. Absolutely.
Um, I totally agree. Let's just confirm. Just the way I read this, though, is it's keeping what is allowed in country into. And then what they will require of a private membership club, which is various, you know, all accommodations are very restaurant, but the other stuff is just listing country one, uh, country and two. But.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think there was a, there was a belief that anything is really changing related to those from what was done originally. I think the intent here was to help ensure that. Some of the, the, some of the other draws, the restaurant food and beverage service draws would be available to the public, because I think the original thought was the membership club would probably. Limit public access to those in particular, um, to those elements in particular. And those are things that the town board I know wanted. Specific public access to, to the restaurants, food and beverage services that were on site.
Well, really, it, it, if we're sitting here talking about it. At, to the extent we are, probably needs greater clarity.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll bring the question.
We need to know where they're coming from and what their intent is, um, so that we understand what the goal is.
Yep. Not a problem.
Um, there is a statement that a country into may not be used as a primary residence. And I had a couple of questions. One, if I was going to have that many people in one place, I would want a manager to have a place to live on site. Is that not allowed now?
That, that statement is original to the original text. It's in the code now. We didn't change that. The intent was that no one could live on this, on these sites permanently. Um, if we want to talk about changing that, we can certainly bring up the question, but, um, that, that's in the code today.
Is there elsewhere some statement about the maximum length of stay that would cover a country into that I didn't catch?
Well, that, that, that happens by default. Anything that's a, that's a. For lack of a better term, a short-term rental is 30 days or less. That's for all, all these types of, that's a common, that's a commonly known and held. Um, requirement. Anything longer that is typically a long, is a long-term rental. Well, at least you could probably.
Yeah, that's, that's the definition of short-term versus long-term. Although I, I don't know how that relates to hotels in the general world. Like, can, can someone stay at a hotel for 31 days, uh, just in general? You know, I don't know if, if, if it is consistent, but.
Not typically. Typically, you've got to stay for less than 30, leave for a day, and then you could come back if that's.
Yeah, same as short-term rental.
Yeah, typically that's how it works. I think that's in the code. I'd have to look.
But also with other hotel facilities, you wouldn't have someone staying on premise, right? People are, are, are having their shift and they would just overlap, right?
I, I guess I would think so. There, there's never really been a discussion about that part of this.
I thought there used to be something, maybe it was in country in, um. It was in country in one where you allowed for a resident manager. It wasn't, it wasn't a primary residence, but, but it was more along the lines of an apartment for a resident manager. Maybe I'm misremembering.
It's, it's not, I just looked, it's not in the country in one, um, standards for the special use permit. It might be somewhere else.
Okay.
It's, I think it's in hotel motel. I think I remember it there.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's certainly in a bed and breakfast requirement that the owner has to be on site.
But it's something that you might want to consider since there is this very strict mandate now that there cannot be a primary residence. You know, if you're changing stuff, it might make sense to allow, uh, a manager to live there. I just have one more question, Jim. This is just a nit. Uh, the definition of suite. It's a combination of bedrooms which can include a separate bathroom. I, I wasn't sure what that meant. Is it, does it mean each of which can include a separate bathroom?
Yeah, just bring it up on the screen for everyone. All right, do I have the definitions up now? I think I do. Um, so. The, we, th- this definition went through a number of, of iterations and, and the main concern is trying to figure out how to define. What that, that combination of rooms would be. Um, we didn't want a suite to be considered just a bunch of bedrooms. Um, that's not necessarily a suite. It, it needs to include other rooms, um, possibly providing provisions for cooking. Um, the idea of, of can including a separate bedroom, I'm trying to remember why we wrote, why it was written that way. Um, that, there, there was a reason for it. I, I honestly don't remember what it was at this point. I have to go back and look. Um.
Well, what would separate from?
What's?
The, the separate bathroom.
Well, well, okay. So I remember what the, so, so the reason why is, is that, you know, the, the separate bathroom, um. We wanted to, to ensure that, oh, yeah, okay, I remember why now. A, a hotel motel or other, um, or other, um. Uh, accommodation like that, uh, uh, commercial hospitality, we didn't want to say. A combination of bedrooms or a bedroom which includes a bathroom, because a, a single, a single hotel, a single hotel room behind that door. Would have a bathroom with it. So if we had said, you know, or even if it's, it is a combination of bedrooms. Um, it, it didn't work before, but that way, I'm not explaining. I'm not explaining it very well, but the, the idea of of putting it in there to say a combination of bathrooms which must include a separate, or a combination of bedrooms and much include, must include a separate bathroom didn't work based on the discussions that we had, and, and we did go around and around on this. I, I can certainly bring it back again to discuss.
Separate from, including a separate bathroom, what does that mean? Why, why is it separate?
Uh, um, the way, the way I read that is like, if you had two rooms and, and the bathroom was only accessible from the bedroom of one.
Right. Thank you.
There had to be a doorway for the second bedroom to get there without having to walk through another room.
What if you were to delete the word separate and put in the word shared?
Shared would work.
bedrooms which can include a shared bathroom. Yeah, I, I think that would work.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you, Edna.
Thanks. Anyone else have questions for me? Else?
You're a brave man, Jim.
Hey, doing the best I can. I'm trying. I'm, uh, trying to remember, like I say, these, you know, you know how zoning law drafting goes, it goes through lots of iterations, so.
Indeed, it does.
Um, just a procedural question. So, um, you know, we, we come back with notes about this. Then town board will make some adjustments or answer some further questions. Once we feel satisfied with our recommendations, then they will go ahead and adapt the law. Is that right procedurally?
Well, they, they need.
No, there's a public hearing, certainly.
So, um, no, I'm just, just, yeah, anything you want to share about process?
Well, and they also don't, I mean, we can, we're certainly free to make our observations and recommendations. They are not bound to adhere to them. I mean, I'm, I'm, I assume knowing them that they will listen to them, but they also have the authority to make their own decision based on where they're coming from. Would expect in something like this that it might be more than one night of public hearing. I suspect there will be interest in it, um, and it's, and as you all can see, it's complicated and difficult to understand. And so I, I think it's behooves the town board to allow the public the greatest possible extent to review it and comment. Is that where you would see it going, Jim?
Yeah, so I, I was just gonna say that the town board sends it to the planning board for review. It goes to the county planning board for review. They look for that input to come back in, and then typically, you know, I would work on any edits or revisions and the way things have worked in the past, depending on what happened, sometimes it comes back to the planning board. Or if they just take your comments, then it might move forward. But yes, it goes through the public, public hearing process. They have to, you know, they have to accept it, maybe talk about it, and then have a public hearing to allow public comment on it, and then see where they go from there.
And if it changes, they could refer it back to us again.
Right, depending, yeah.
But what is our next step now, given our discussion of this evening?
I'm going to, I'm going to carry these comments forward. Might work with Gretchen to just put them on, you know, planning board letterhead, and then I'll carry them forward and talk with, uh, the town attorney working on these and, and others, and, and just bring forward your questions and concerns and, and thoughts on this.
I thought we're going to have an opportunity at our next meeting to perhaps look at a resolution and then vote on it. I didn't realize that this was going to go to the town board tonight.
It's just the questions.
No, no, just the questions for clarification. So I'll bring back, I'll bring back hopefully answers to the questions so that we can discuss those at the next meeting, and then you can decide. You know, how you, how you want to move from there. At some point, they, they are going to schedule the public hearing. We need to get comments back before then, but I don't think it's going to happen in the next, you know, next couple of weeks. I think we have a little time.
Okay.
But I, I need to keep on top of that and make sure we don't miss the deadline for submitting comments.
The hope is that we will hear back from the town board prior to our next meeting. At which point, if we feel comfortable, we can certainly look at a resolution of recommendation on these two amendments. And if we are not satisfied, uh, we can so express. The one thing we don't probably want to do is if we do not, we have 60 days from the day it's, uh, referred to us to make a recommendation. We don't want to say nothing, because then the assumption is that we fully approve of what, what is being proposed. And if we still have questions, doubts, I think we want to express those to the town board and hopefully they'll, you know, seriously consider what those doubts and what those questions are, because I certainly think they want to do the best job they possibly can with this. And for better or worse, the planning board is probably more experienced with issues dealing with land use, planning, things of this sort than the members of the town board are. So one would hope that they would take our comments and concerns seriously.
Just in regards to the application, which I remember being very lengthy, was it, was there a recorded version of when that presentation happened for Sean and Joe to watch it and better understand what was presented to us?
This is the presentation for grassmere?
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I think it's important to take the conversation and really not try to focus on specific application, because this is not being developed for that.
Totally. Oh, yeah, yeah. And I wa- I wasn't suggesting that. I was just, when we were going through tea house application, I realized how much happened also before I was there. So just from a familiarity standpoint of what happened to lead up to some of this.
Yeah, I, I just would hate to, to link the two. That one was dependent on the other.
Fair enough.
Other, I don't know how others feel, but that was just my personal comment.
I would like to keep them separate. I noticed, uh, during this conversation, we kept on linking them, and it was the more we keep them separate, the better.
It, it's absolutely a separate thing. The, um, the only reference point we have, I guess, is, is the approved plan. And that's why I, you know, I reference back to it once in a while, just as a, as a point of reference. But what gets done here, you know, would have an impact on the, you know, the application that could have an impact on the application before us now. But also any other, um, country into that may or may not come in. And as I said, I believe there are five others that could theoretically be developed in the towns. This is not just about one property and one development. It's, there's, there's a larger discussion and, and thought process here for the country into changes. And then for the definitions, again, those are, those are across the board for the town for all these uses. So, um, so that is not at all specific to anything.
Is there a date that the town board plans to bring this up, uh, at a meeting?
It was, it was, it's scheduled. I'd have to check online. Country in two definitions, local law is scheduled for January 25th, and the, um, the meeting material is posted online on the, the homepage of the town's website.
So
and.
Opportunity to discuss this again or decide on a resolution, right, before their meeting?
And hospitality is also up on January 25th.
For that meeting, Edna, no, we don't have a meeting. I think our next meeting is February, whatever it is, that Monday.
But they haven't scheduled a public hearing. They will have to continue their discussion. Is that correct?
Yeah, they have to give us 60 days to get in our recommendation. They can't close the public hearing at least before that 60 days is up.
Seems to me it would be useful for them to have a recommendation from the planning board before they schedule that meeting, that first meeting.
Well, that may be true, but that's not what they chose to do.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk with, you know, I'll, I'll talk with Elizabeth and, um, we'll see where, where things are going. I don't know what their plans are for that public hearing that night. Um, if it's discussion open, you know, obviously it's to take public comment on the draft that's out there now. So they'll be taking, you know, taking public comments at that meeting. They'll, they'll get the comments from the planning board, and then we'll move forward from there. But they'll be reviewing the same draft that you did.
Any, any more questions or comments on these two amendments for Jim to carry with him? After the discussion with those working on these amendments. Okay, I think, I think it's been a very helpful discussion. It certainly has been for me. And I certainly hope it has been for, uh, for all y'all as well. I hope, uh, Sean and, and Joe weren't found us to be sufficiently enlightening that they're going to come back again for the next meeting. And, um, I want to really thank you guys both for being willing to, you know, put in the time that I think you now realize you're going to be putting in for this and be willing to, you know, share your abilities and skills with us. It's, it's much appreciated. You can see how an important function this is, and we really need people really willing to do some very heavy lifting, and it's much appreciated. You guys are willing to help us out. I guess if that's it, if anyone has anything else on any topic they wanted to say tonight? Hearing nothing, could I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Melody.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Stand adjourned. Thank you all very much. Much appreciated, and we'll see, uh, not all that long from now, actually, a couple of weeks.